Welcome to the City Council's December 15th Special City Council Meeting. This is a teleconference meeting with City Council, city staff, and members of the public participating remotely to ensure proper social distancing in this federal, state, and local emergency. I would like to introduce staff and City Council members present. Vice Mayor Drew Combs, City Council Member Kat Carlton, City Council Member Betsy Nash, City Council Member Ray Mueller. Staff present include our City Manager, Starla Jerome Robinson, our interim City Attorney, Cara Silver, and our City Clerk, Judy Heron. Ms. Heron, would you please provide instructions to the City Council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, and again echoing the welcome to the special Menlo Park City Council meeting today, December 15th. At this time, we do ask that the City Council remain on screen for the duration of the meeting, controlling your own webcams and microphones. Staff will engage their webcams and microphones when making presentations and responding to any questions from the City Council. For members of the public, if you wish to speak on an item on tonight's agenda, after the mayor calls for a public comment, please engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. That will alert us to your comment. I'll have the chance to open up your microphone, and you may address the City Council at that time. Finally, directing your attention to the handouts. We have got an update to an attachment to one of the staff reports for City Council appointments, as well as the agenda. And Mayor Taylor, you may continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. And the next item on our agenda is presentation and proclamations. Ms. Heron, do we have any public comment on presentations and proclamations?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So for any member of the public wishing to speak on any of our presentations and proclamations this evening regarding state of the city, please engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. I'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you may address the City Council at this time. So this will be the final call for any public comment on the state of the city. And seeing no hands raised, Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. And at this time, I would like to acknowledge the staff that assisted in this process with the State of the City. Mr. Nick Figueros, Chief Dave Spiller, and also Myra Lombaros. Might not be pronouncing her name correctly, but I just wanted to say thank you for helping me pull this together. Good evening. I am Cecilia Taylor, your 2020 mayor. I will be presenting the 2020 State of the City Address on behalf of the City of Menlo Park and the Menlo Park City Council. 2020 has been an unprecedented year for Menlo Park and the entire world. Back in March, we were hit by the first shelter-in-place order from the governor due to the biggest public crisis of our lifetime. Businesses, both small and large, were shut down. Schools were closed, and far too many of our residents have gone through incredible hardships. My heart goes out to residents that were impacted by COVID-19, whether they lost their job, faced dwindling essential supplies, became ill themselves, or lost a loved one. In spite of the financial downturn and public health concerns, Menlo Park has survived and continues to serve its residents, in great part due to the leadership and guidance of the City Council. To say that council and city staff were faced with some of the hardest decisions in council history is an understatement. With a deficit of nearly $13 million, there were difficult budget cuts to be made. We have been able to pivot our programs and resources to meet the needs of our community, and are well on our way. One of our biggest concerns was making sure our vulnerable populations were taken care of mentally and physically. I am pleased to say that we were able to completely change operations practically overnight with hands-on help from city staff from all departments. We converted the senior center meal program to home delivery, added wellness checks with phone calls, and added online activities. Recreation facilities were forced to close, but our outstanding staff developed a virtual rec center and virtual events to keep the residents engaged and connected. We were also able to safely reactivate childcare and transform after-school programs into learning pods for distant learning. Faced with library closures, library staff revitalized the Little Free Library program and moved to a books-by-mail model, in addition to opening up curbside pickup in order for residents to have access to books and entertainment. Our police personnel carried out their duty to protect and serve our community under compounding crisis of COVID-19, record-breaking heat waves, and hazardous air quality from wildfire smoke. We have initiated community listening sessions to hear residents' perceptions and expectations of our police department and its services. And the department enhanced training this year by facilitating implicit bias training for all sworn personnel. Recognizing the financial hardship of our residents, the City Council modified the Tenant Relocation Assistance Program to the Tenant Assistance Program, making $100,000 available for emergency rental assistance. With downtown businesses, especially restaurants struggling to stay prosperous, the City Council supported closing some downtown streets to allow more foot traffic and outdoor space. The Building Department has implemented the Temporary Outdoor Use Permit Program and expedited permit review to support local businesses during the uncertainty of the pandemic. The city also donated $70,000 to the Samhainale Strong to assist small businesses in Menlo Park affected by COVID-19. Public Works has continued to maintain our city without interruption for the duration of the pandemic. They are clearly and truly our essential service staff. The city has enhanced its permit tracking and land data management system to accept online building permit applications and issue certain permits to provide flexibility and continuity in service while City Hall remains closed to the public. Some of this year's additional accomplishments include: We have issued the building permits to construct a public pedestrian path from the Facebook West Campus over Bayfront Expressway to the Bay Trail. It is anticipated to be completed by the fall of the new year. The city participated in a FEMA program that will lower flood insurance for some of our residents. The city's environmentally sustainable local amendments to the California Building Code, known as the REACH Code, became effective on January 1st, 2020. Adopting local energy codes that reduce fossil fuels, such as natural gas, used in buildings aligned with the city's climate action plan to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, working towards zero-carbon buildings. The city adopted an Urgency Accessory Dwelling Unit Ordinance, also known as ADU, to conform to new state laws to further promote the production of housing. The Community Development Department continued to process large development projects within the El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan Area and the Bayfront Area. We also issued a Notice of Funding Available of approximately $10 million to support the preservation and/or production of permanent affordable housing. Finance has implemented new budget and reporting software, allowing remote preparation of the budget and dynamic, transparent views of city finances for members of the community. They have also adapted to remote processes and improved efficiency by continuing to eliminate paper-based processes in business licenses, payroll, accounts payable, and accounts receivable. None of these accomplishments would have been possible without our outstanding IT department, which facilitated fast, safe, and effective telework options for the majority of city staff, allowing City Council meetings and city operations to continue remotely, as well as commissions and committee meetings. IT has also continued improvements to network infrastructure, security, and the IT Master Plan implementation, and finalized land management software upgrade and expanded options available to the public. And then came COVID. In addition to the pandemic, we have faced an overwhelming wildfire season, the public uproar and unrest over the murder of George Floyd and countless others, and overall systemic racism being a public health crisis as called out by the American Medical Association. I am proud that, together, on June 16th, the council unanimously passed Resolution Number 6563, condemning police brutality and supporting Black Lives Matter. These events have led us to carefully evaluate and discuss current operations in the City of Menlo Park, and I want to assure you that the council is committed to ongoing change. Structural and systemic racism has long-term impacts on our community's health and well-being, and I will continue to be a voice on the council to address these issues. As I prepare for the end of the year and our City Council reorganization in Menlo Park, I look back on this year and cannot imagine any of these achievements without the strength, resilience, and courage of our residents, our City Council, and our city staff. On a personal note, I'm especially proud of all that I've achieved based on my priorities coming into this role. Some of these achievements build on what I've covered so far, and others are initiatives that I drove and aligned to my focus on equity, inclusion, and community well-being. Here are five achievements I am particularly proud of. Addressing homelessness in our city. I created the Triangle Task Force in June 2020 in response to multiple calls to the Menlo Park Police Department and the Menlo Park Fire Department about the homeless encampment that is bound by Willow Road, University Avenue, and Bayfront, Highway 84. This is governed by multiple jurisdictions, and it is important that we help keep our first responders safe and increase the outreach to the encampment dwellers. In a three-year period, there were 100 encampment calls, 26 encampment medical calls, and six fire investigations. And in 2020 alone, there were 46 fires, 12 medical calls, and five fire investigations. Also, there is a cleanup effort that began in Phase 1 in October of this year, and there will be another Phase 2, Phase 2 of the cleanup happening in January of 2021. Just as an update, in the summer, there were approximately 60 dwellers on that land, and currently, there are less than 10. I say progress has been made. Being a consistent advocate of needs of the residents of Menlo Park, as a part of this, I created a community amenities list, a community amenities subcommittee with the support of the council, which allowed us to review and reprioritize the adopted list of community amenities from 2016, and will include a review of items placed in the parking lot that typically don't get addressed coming out of a large brainstorming or strategy session. Next, focusing on emergency preparedness of our communities. I've achieved this by elevating the flood district and sea level rise discussion to include areas of concern, particularly since 60% of the Bellhaven neighborhood is in the flood zone. Next, improving the quality of our residents' lives. And on this note, I advocated for the installation of air quality monitors in Bellhaven by the Samhainale County Labs. I also advocated for temporary noise monitors that were placed and installed by the SFO Roundtable for a few weeks to better determine and understand how airplane noise impacts our communities. The report will come out in sometime of early 2021. Lastly, giving a voice to District 1, which has not had a representative as mayor in almost 40 years on the council. Now more than ever, District 1 residents are members of commissions and committees and contributing solutions to our challenges. For example, I'm proud of District 1's voice and involvement in the strategy and planning of the new Menlo Park Community Campus in Bellhaven. Being a member of the subcommittee, I ensured that our community's concerns were being addressed. This campus has a targeted completion date of 2023. I'm deeply appreciative of the investment, partnership, and support that Facebook has demonstrated with our residents, our city staff, and the City Council. Menlo Park is a vibrant city, blessed with talented staff and led by a caring and informed council. I want to assure you that we are working tirelessly to keep you and your families safe and to set ourselves up for a prosperous future. It has been my honor and privilege to serve as your mayor this year, 2020. I'd like to end with a quote from Henry P. Organ, a Menlo Park resident. "Acts of kindness should not be random, but deliberate and daily." Thank you. Right, we'll move to the next item on our agenda, which is our consent calendar. Under the consent calendar, the City Council may take action to approve routine business items in one motion unless a City Council member, city staff member, or a member of the public requests that an item be discussed or continued to a later date. Ms. Heron, do we have any public comment on the consent calendar?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, we invite any member of the public wishing to speak on Item C1 or C2 of our consent calendar. To engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen, we'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you may address the City Council at this time. This will be the final call for any public comment on the consent calendar. Item C1 or C2. Seeing no hands raised, Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. At this time, I'll bring it back to the council. Are there any questions on the consent calendar, or do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by City Council Member Carlton, and a second by City Council Member Nash to approve the consent calendar. Any further city council discussion or questions? Seeing none, by roll call vote, City Council Member Carlton.
Aye.
City Council Member Mueller.
Yes.
City Council Member Nash.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs.
Yes.
And Mayor Taylor.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. The next item on our agenda is regular business. Under regular business, the City Council considers recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require City Council approval. And Item D1 is recognition of our outgoing City Council member. Ms. Heron, do we have any public comment on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So for any member of the public wishing to speak on Item D1, recognition of outgoing City Council member, please engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. We'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you may address the City Council at this time. Okay, so our first public commenter will be Pam Jones. Pamela, if you'd like to unmute yourself, you may address the City Council at this time.
Good evening, and thank you, Pam Jones here. I want to say to you, Catherine Carlton, that I have to acknowledge that at times I was rather harsh, and my apologies. I'm deeply grateful for your commitment to Menlo Park and your passion and tireless service for all of us. You have helped make Menlo Park a better, a great city. I will miss that passion that you demonstrate on the council, and most of all, I will miss your smile. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next public commenter will be Gina Papin. Gina, if you'd like to unmute yourself, you may address the City Council at this time. Gina, it does look like you are off mute. Are you able to engage your microphone? Okay. So at this time, our next speaker is going to be Raghunadade Karja. Forgive me if I've mispronounced your name, Raghunadade Karja.
No, it's actually Ragda. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you so much.
Of course. I'm actually here on behalf of Congresswoman Jackie Speer. And I'm not sure if Mayor Taylor has already retrieved our congressional record that I dropped off to City Hall earlier today. But I'd like to present this congressional record to Councilmember Catherine Carlton on behalf of Congresswoman Jackie Speer. We recognize Ms. Carlton for her eight years of service on the City Council of Menlo Park. During her time on the council, Ms. Carlton represented Menlo Park on 12 regional committees or agencies. Under her leadership and guidance, the city has been revitalized. The parks refreshed, the libraries upgraded, long-needed infrastructure investments were made, and schools remain strong. She has served as a volunteer with over nine nonprofits, among many other accomplishments, all while raising two children with her husband, Robert. Her service and accomplishments are hereby instated in the Congressional Record of the United States of America. We are honored to know and work with Ms. Carlton and wish her all the best in the years ahead.
Thank you for your comment. Our next public commenter will be Lynn Bramlett. Lynn, you're off mute and able to address the City Council at this time.
Can you hear me?
Oh, perfect. Thank you, Lynn.
Okay, I have a new computer. Good evening, council, and I certainly want to thank and Councilmember Carlton and just say I very much appreciate your eight years of service. I appreciate your quiet dignity that you always had on the council. I certainly admired how your graciousness with people, your tact, your diplomacy, your general poise, as well as very specifically what you accomplished in the areas that you focused on. I appreciate, too, your support of disaster preparedness in Menlo Park and really caring about your community. And I do want to mention one thing that people may not know. And one of the library, someone told me how you would even sometimes give people a ride home from the council meeting who didn't have a car. And, you know, just that kind touch, and, you know, you're not, you're not a chest thumper, which I really admire. But I just want to say you do many kind, many quiet acts of kindness, and you are very much appreciated, and you will be missed.
Thank you for your comment, Lynn. I am going to go to Assemblymember Mark Berman. Mark, you are off mute and able to address the City Council at this time.
Great, thanks so much, and congratulations, Mayor Taylor, on your year. Congratulations, Jen Wilson, for getting elected. And thank you so much to Kat Carlton for your eight years of service on the council. And obviously, more years than that in your service to Menlo Park. As a new Menlo Park resident, I want to say thank you for all the work that you've done to make Menlo Park as amazing of a city as it is, and that me and my wife are enjoying so much. I remember, you know, you and I got elected to city councils at the same time. I was living in Palo Alto then and got elected to the Palo Alto City Council at the same time you got elected to Menlo Park. And I remember, I think the first time we met might have been in or around Sacramento for the League of Cities training that they did. And I remember the first thing I thought to myself is, thank God Kat wasn't running against me. Because here is somebody who's been so successful in the private sector, who's lived and worked and been successful abroad, who'd already volunteered and participated in so many local organizations supporting the community, and now you decided to put your efforts towards the City Council. And I just, I'm so grateful. Since then, we've had a lot of meetings, whether it's since I've been in the assembly. You brought people up for the Junior League, and we've had really good conversations in my office in Sacramento, in my office here, around your work around Peninsula Clean Energy and regional leadership on energy policy. It seems like, you know, most of us put aside a lot of the, our, you know, additional interests when we serve on a council. It seems like you served on the council, and you kept, you added more things onto your plate in terms of, you know, the different activities that you did to make Menlo Park a better place. So I just really thank you for the conversations that we've had, whether it was at Progress Seminar, League of Cities meetings, or, you know, as some other folks mentioned, I always know when I talk with Kat that, A, it's going to be substantive, but B, you're not going to be yelling at me about a lot of things, which I can't say for everybody. You know, you're, you just have a way about you that is, you know, substantive and to the point, but also pleasant, that I really appreciate. So just really want to say thanks for all you've done for Menlo Park. We have a fancy resolution on its way. Unfortunately, COVID has disrupted the state's ability to churn those out as quickly as we usually do, but it is coming. And just thank you so much for your friendship, for all your work, and look forward to more chats in the future.
Thank you, Assemblymember Berman. Our next public commenter, I'll be returning to Gina Papin. Gina, if you'd like to unmute yourself, you may address the City Council at this time.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good, thank you. Sorry about that, technical difficulties. Kat, you are amazing. Yeah, my name is Gina Papin. I am on the Millbrae City Council, and I served with Kat on the Legislative Committee for CCAG and CCAG in so many different areas. She has been a fantastic representative, not only for Menlo Park, but regionally. She has brought an honest and respectful opinion to absolutely everything. I have so enjoyed working with you, and I hope to work with you in the future. We all have so many great things to do ahead. I wish you the very, very best. Thank you so much for serving your community and the region. Kat, you're great, and I hope that we still get to see you around. I'm sure you are going to be around. Thank you so much. I wish you all the best. Happy holidays to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And our final hand raise is Lawrence Ennous. You are off mute and able to address the City Council at this time.
Hello, my name is Lawrence Ennous. I've met Katherine around the world in various conferences and at large global events, and I want to congratulate Katherine Carlton for her dedicated work. No one in my knowledge has been a more incredible, humble, thoughtful, and passionate ambassador to her city. And I want to thank her for the education and inspiration she gave many of us for the last years all around the world. It's not only in your area in California that people respect her and listen to her and look up to her. It's all over the world, and I wanted to thank her for that. And thank you for giving me the chance to say it out loud. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And this will be the final call for any public comments on Item D1, regarding recognition of City Councilmember Carlton. Seeing no further hands raised, Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. And at this time, I will read the proclamation. "A proclamation expressing the City of Menlo Park's appreciation to Katherine Carlton. Whereas Katherine Carlton was elected to the City Council in 2012 and re-elected in 2016, and was selected as mayor pro tem in 2014, and served as mayor in 2015. And whereas Katherine Carlton served with distinction, representing the city on dozens of local, regional, and state committees, and colluding Peninsula Clean Energy, CCAG, League of California Cities Environmental and Public Safety Policy Committees, serving as president of the League's LGBTQ Caucus, among countless others. And whereas Katherine Carlton was also a champion of small businesses, as evidenced by her support for the responsibility, the responsible redevelopment of the El Camino Real Corridor. Her outreach to many residents, excuse me, her outreach to many restaurants and shops that make downtown Menlo Park special, and her efforts to preserve and enhance Santa Cruz Avenue throughout the COVID-19 pandemic by adapting the city's policies to support local businesses. And whereas Katherine Carlton and the City Council adopted..." adopted major planning and development initiatives that will impact our communities for decades to come, including Connect Menlo General Plan update, the city's ambitious reach codes, building electrification and electric vehicle charging requirements, an updated climate action plan with the goal to be carbon neutral by 2030, the transportation master plan and its multimodal approach to improve the quality of life of Menlo Park residents, an updated housing element, housing policies for accessory dwelling units and density near transit. And whereas Catherine Carlton is known statewide as an ardent supporter of social justice, working to end human trafficking, domestic violence, bullying, and discrimination. And whereas Catherine Carlton worked to open community to historical, cultural, and business opportunities by supporting the work of the Sister City Committee to foster friendship and sister-city relationships, including agreements with cities in Ireland, Japan, India, and China. And now therefore it be proclaimed that the City of Menlo Park extends its heartfelt appreciation to Catherine Carlton for her years of leadership, dedication, and service to the Menlo Park community." And now, I would like to turn the floor to Councilmember Catherine Carlton.
Wow, thank you, thank you so much. I want to give my deepest thanks to all of the residents, commissioners, business owners, staff, and the other elected officials who've worked with us to make Menlo Park and our larger community the best place that it can be. Many years ago, we had councils who attacked each other on the dais, played gacha with staff. And I'm so happy that we've established a culture where we work together. When talking about United We Stand, most people think of Abraham Lincoln, but it's actually from the Bible. Every kingdom divided against itself is brought to dissolution, and every house divided against itself shall not stand. I've mentioned before, when I've spoken, that United We Stand, Divided We Fall is part of our culture. Even Harry Potter was written to say, "We are only as strong as we are united and weak as we are divided." From Martin Luther King to Benjamin Franklin, Agnostic Front to Sunny and Cher, Aesop's Fables to Marvel Comics, across our history and our culture, United We Stand, Divided We Fall has been a truth that is known and repeated. It has been a very, very weird and difficult year, but I know that the coming year will bring healing, both physical healing in the pandemic, coming under control with the vaccine, which I hope people take, and psychological healing in working together. Be kind to each other. I was delighted that Mayor Taylor mentioned that in her speech. Harsh words put people on the defensive. Kind words inspire compassion and action. Kind words are so much more powerful. I know that people now on council, I know them well as individuals. I remember when Jen first came up concerned about safe routes to school when one of the schools opened. I've seen her evolve and really respected the amount of work that she's put in through the years. I can say without reservation that our council members are all good people who want Menlo Park to be the best place that it can be. They may not agree on every detail of how to get there, but they know not to hold grudges. Someone might vote against you for one thing, but be a great ally on the next. Every single one of these people have earned my respect through the years, and I know that our city is in good hands. I want to say thank you to my family for their support and their patience when I spent all weekends studying my council packet instead of playing with them. And so many weeks when night after night I had a council meeting, a subcommittee meeting, a joint power authority meeting of some kind, Peninsula Clean Energy, all the different city-related meetings. I cannot say enough about how strong and supportive my husband is. And I want to say thank you again to our city staff for their patience and their dedication. A lot of people don't know, we have staff members from Harvard, from Princeton, people with decades of really amazing experience. And you really don't know how many hours goes into each one of those staff reports. Our staff is critical for the work that we do, and I deeply and sincerely appreciate their patience, their support, everything that they've done through the years to make us successful. I want to say thank you to the other city council members from throughout the region. We sit on state, we sit on regional boards. Most of our real issues are not specific to Menlo Park. Housing, traffic, they're all regional issues. And we've worked together to address these. And so many of you aren't just colleagues, you've become really good friends now. And I sincerely have enjoyed working with you, and I've learned a lot. And I look forward to seeing how that impact grows and develops over time for our communities. And I want to say thank you to the residents of Menlo Park for your faith in electing me twice to City Council. It has been an absolute honor and privilege to serve you. And I leave you in good hands. And I want to say thank you to all of you, and I want to say welcome to Council Jen. You'll have a lot of fun, it'll be a lot of work, but I think you'll find it one of the most rewarding things you'll do in your lifetime. So sincerely, from the bottom of my heart, I'm going to miss you all so much, I really will. But at least now, we don't have to worry about Brown Act. We can get together. So, thank you. I'll miss you a lot, and I deeply appreciate everyone's support and their trust and their faith. And I hope to see you soon. Bye.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. I appreciate everything you just shared. And I saw Councilmember Mueller had his hand raised.
Yes, so first, I have a text from a colleague in another city that I should, that he's asked me to read. So I'll read that first. It's from, from, excuse me, I can see, from Wayne Lee from Millbrae. And Wayne has written, "Dear Mayor Taylor and City Council, I regret that I cannot be present in person and express my sincere thanks to each of you. I'm exiting the Millbrae City Council after nine years, but I want to express my appreciation for you. I feel unfortunate to serve Millbrae, San Mateo County, and the State of California as a representative on the Association of Bay Area Governments. Congratulations to Mayor Taylor for your outstanding leadership during these unprecedented times. You stayed the ship during the crisis, and the city responded positively. Thank you to Councilwoman Catherine Carlton, who I consider a wonderful person and friend. We saw on many environmental boards and committees Peninsula Clean Energy as one. We've precluded thousands of greenhouse gases from poisoning our planet. Congratulations," and says something about me. "Congratulations to Councilmember-elect Jen Wilson. As the former President of the California League of Cities Asian Pacific Islanders Caucus and the current President of San Mateo County API Caucus, we thank Mayor Taylor and the city of Menlo Park for supporting and announcing assaults against Asians. San Mateo County API Caucus support diversity and equality. We thank you for your support and protection for Asians during this difficult time and Chinese villainization due to COVID-19. In summary, it has been a deep, profound honor to work with each of you, and I say that you are my friend. I wish you, your staff, and daily city citizens well, and best wishes for a safe and healthy future. Orms Owain Jaylee, a recovering Councilmember of the City of Millbrae." Now, I've read that. Kat, I'm going to miss you on City Council. We've served together for eight years, and the way that we were introduced to each other, people were trying to force a marriage. And it was funny, we didn't really know each other that well. And during these eight years, it's been a relationship that grew really to mutual respect and friendship, and really could rely on you. And it's funny, you did everything with such class during your time on City Council. It was always, and it was funny, you would call me after a council meeting, and you'd say, "I'm so mad." And I think, I know she's mad, but she's just saying it with such class and so happily. It's hard to imagine she's that mad. And it allows you to get things done. And it was, it's that diplomacy that just really shined through. It allowed you to be so effective on PCE. And I always tell people, when we did international, we did some international events and traveled together, and I always felt like I was the person carrying your bag, because everyone would just responded to you so well. You're such an incredible diplomat. And the work that you did in our city, the attention that you paid attention to our downtown, and your fierce advocacy that I know is going to continue. I know that that will continue. And I'm going to miss all of it. But I'm going to miss your policymaking, I'm going to miss your, I'm used to working with you on council and hearing your input. I'll miss that, and I'm going to miss your friendship. So thank you, and thank you for the service to the city.
Councilmember Nash.
Kat, I believe we first met about five years ago when you were a member of council, and I was active on community matters that were before the council. And I've really enjoyed getting to know you over the past two years. And you've been a wonderful colleague. I've been amazed at your networking skills with so many government and business relationships, as well as your experience on council. It's just been invaluable. Thank you for everything. I've appreciated your leadership on the Peninsula Clean Energy Board, and I look forward to staying in touch and not having to worry about the Brown Act. So thank you for everything.
Vice Mayor Combs.
Yeah, so first I'll start off and say, I think I was the recipient of one of those drives home back in the day. So I can confirm that Lynn Bramlett is accurate. Kat, I definitely 100% remember our first conversation, because I was new to Menlo Park and had, and I was working from home at the time. And so when I saw that the city was accepting applications for bike commissioners, I was like, oh, this seems interesting. It'll get me out of the house. And so I applied. And then I remember some weeks later, I got a call from you, and you were the only member of the council that called. And you wanted to know about like sort of what I thought about sort of multimodal transportation schemes and about the trade-offs. And I was like, why is this woman calling me? I just want to be on the bike commission. Why is she asking me all these really in-depth questions about where I, what I'm thinking and what I've read when it comes to different approaches to transportation? But again, I think that that speaks to who you are, what I think we've all seen and what has been said previously. You are someone that does their homework with a thoroughness that I have rarely seen over the course of my academic and professional and community service career. And so hats off to you. I think it is a motto for everyone who follows you in this role, the way in which you've approached the things that we've taken up. And so I'd just like to say, it has been a pleasure serving with you on City Council for the past two years. It has been a pleasure serving with you, serving the residents of Menlo Park for, together for the past seven years. I think there was a recent discussion in closed session where you reminded me that you first voted for me when I applied for the Planning Commission. And so I, again, thank you for that early support. But thank you for your service, more than anything, to this community. I'm in awe of it. And it has been, again, a pleasure to see it up close for the past two years.
Councilmember Mueller.
Sorry to go back in, but my phone's lighting up. Former East Palo Alto Mayor Larry Moody is reaching out saying much appreciation to Councilmember Catherine Carlton and the Mayor Taylor, and asked me to share that with you all. So I wanted to make sure I did.
Thank you. I'm sad that we can't get together and celebrate, but I think we should do it in August. I'm making the leap of faith that we're going to have a vaccine, and we're going to get this under control. And I look forward to getting together at some point in the near future and celebrating. But before I, I don't know how this is going to work. I guess I'm going to just turn off my camera, and then Jen will jump in here. I don't envy Mayor Taylor for the year that you've been mayor. For those of you that don't know Mayor Taylor personally, she's quiet, but she sees everything. And she thinks, I had a professor in college that used to say, "Do not vomit what you have not yet digested." And I think that Cecilia does a very good job of listening and thinking and considering before she speaks. And I have just grown to respect her so much through the years. And think about everything that you've gone through. We've had protests coming through Menlo Park, we've had the plague, we've had all these different things. And you have dealt with it with such dignity and such thoughtfulness, and I think a genuine passion, not only for District One, but for the City of Menlo Park and our whole region. And I just wanted to say, I really think that you are an amazing, wonderful person. And I really respect you and everything that you've done to steer the city through a very difficult year. So congratulations. And congratulations to Jen. I know you'll have a wonderful experience on council as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. I really appreciate the kind words about me. I want to share my kind words about you. I remember when I first met you, it was at a San Francisco Creek JPA meeting. And you asked me, you said, "Are you sure you want to run for council? Is I getting a PhD?" And you were right, considering the size of our packets, they're pretty massive. But my experience with you, just over the past 12 months, especially serving on subcommittees with you, I have grown fond of you, and also I have a deep, deep honor and respect for you, your opinion, your position, your commitment, your tenacity, your honesty, and your love of what you do. And I know that wherever you wind up tomorrow morning, whatever your thought is, it will definitely carry those things. I appreciate being able to serve with you. I got my first badge of honor, I believe, running for council in 2016 and not winning, and having the opportunity to sit next to you, running a second time. So thank you. Thank you for being welcoming, thank you for being honest, thank you for being you. And I look forward to our non-Brown Act conversations. And Ms. Heron, I have to ask you at this time, I'm not sure what the procedure is.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So, City Councilmember Carlton, you're more than welcome to stay on screen for Item D2. City Councilmember-elect Wilson will join us for the oath, and then she will be with us for the duration of the meeting.
Thank you. And Ms. Heron, I believe at this time, we are to take public comment on Item D2.
Correct. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on Item D2, Recognition of Outgoing Mayor, please engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. I'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you may address the City Council at this time. So our first public commenter will be Julie Shanson. Julie, you're off mute, if you would like to address the City Council at this time.
So I just wanted to say, Mayor Taylor, it has been a pleasure to have you at the helm of the city. And others have mentioned what a challenge this particular year has been. I think you've risen to it amazingly. And I look forward to all the great things you will still be doing as a member of the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next public commenter is Gina Pappen.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Mayor Taylor, I've had the pleasure of working with you on several different things, and I so appreciate your honest and truthful representation of the residents of Menlo Park. It's not always easy to keep a city together. You've done an amazing job this year. It's been so challenging for everyone. So thank you for your service. I look forward to working with you in the future. We have many great things to do as far as transportation and what goes on in your city. So I look forward to working with you and the remaining members of the council. I wish you well. Congratulations on a very tough year and a very productive year.
Thank you for your comment. Our next public commenter is Josie Gayard. Josie, if you'd like to unmute yourself, you may address the City Council at this time.
Great, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Mayor Taylor, thank you. Like others have said, you know, every, you know, waking up during the pandemic, we would get messages from you. I just kept thinking to myself, they were very reassuring, they were very clear, they provided wonderful leadership during a really stressful time. And I just want to say thank you and how much I admire, you know, the leadership that you provided. The other thing I want to say is, it's just so wonderful to now have someone representing District One to bring the voices of the community members. to bring the voices of the community members, you know, our fellow Menlo Park residents from District One into the conversation. And I really appreciate your leadership and just bringing, bringing those important voices forward. So thank you for your leadership, and I look forward to your continued leadership on the, on the council.
Thank you for your comment. So this will be, oh, here we go. Lynn Bramlett, it looked like you had your hand raised. Lynn, did you have a public comment at this time?
Yes, yes, I do. On this new computer, I can't really see the hands. So anyway, I'll get it fixed later. But I too want to express my most sincere appreciation and respect for you, Mayor Taylor. And just the wonderful job that I think you've done as mayor this year, and all the many things you do that a lot of people just know a little bit about. And I would say that encampment, I had no idea the extent of that and how quietly you went about bringing together the, the different jurisdictions to work together on this very serious problem. And it's just been a huge undertaking. And I'm very appreciative of that. And I've heard that expressed as well by, for other people. I also want to compliment you on how you've been at these meetings. I thought you had a lot of poise, the way you would call on people, be very fair. It was extremely smooth. And for something that, you know, this is new for you. And especially your very first meeting was pretty astonishing to me. You had just been elected, and suddenly you had to act in the mayor role because the mayor wasn't at the meeting. And it just went so well. And there's been a real refreshing realness about you too, in addition to the poise and how, how you are. So I'm very grateful, and I think you have very good judgment. And I really appreciate all the work you're doing outside of your district and for other people. You really care about the city. That's evident. And I'm just really glad that you're, you'll still be on the council. And we look forward to more contributions from you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next public commenter, the name is coming up, is Cafe Zoe. If you'd like to unmute yourself, you may address the city council at this time. Again, this is for Cafe Zoe. Did you have a public comment at this time?
Do you do it? Oh, hi, sorry.
Hi, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, hi. We just wanted to say, this is Zoe, yes, of Cafe Zoe fame. No, and Kathleen, we just wanted to say to Mayor Taylor that she is the epitome of class and grace. Every conversation we leave either inspired, having shared laughter, or both. Cecilia, I can't wait to see you again for a gigantic laughter and avocado toast soon. Love you.
Hi, it's Kathleen. Just to say, Cecilia, it's been an honor ever since the day I met you, when you walked into the cafe, that first year you ran to help you with your campaign. And just to watch you deal with this city, the entire city, with such grace, belief in everyone, in a year where so much has happened. You know, in many ways, sometimes I wish this wasn't the year that you got to be mayor. But then I'm also so proud that it was your year to be mayor. Everything from the Black Lives Matter protests to COVID, to systemic racism, understanding what's really going on in your district, but taking on the entire city and caring about the entire city while you so desperately hang on to making things better for Bellhaven and the city at large. So it's just an honor and a joy to, to have you in the cafe life, to share you with, you know, the community that you get to see in this little random cafe. But just more importantly, I'm just so honored. And I think Menlo Park is just so fortunate to have brought you into the city government. So just thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So this will be the final call for any public comment on item D2 regarding recognition of the outgoing mayor, Mayor Taylor. Next public commenter will be Pamela Jones. Pamela, if you'd like to address the city council, you may at this time.
Yes, thank you. I wouldn't be consistent if I didn't say something about most things on the agenda. But to you, Mayor Taylor, I appreciate the work that you've done. And I too can testify to the grace and compassion that you've had for this past year for the residents of Menlo Park and for your council, each council member. And that, that's quite remarkable. You've been a real credit to our city, you know, to our little community over here, and to your family. So, and I'm really, I'm really proud of you. I know that this next year, that you will be doing amazing work on behalf of the city of Menlo Park. And, and I'm grateful for that. And I would like to read two of the letters that came in, as I was asked to read them. This is from Marty Hunter. "Cecilia, thank you for all that you have done and continue to do for the Bellhaven community, as well as Menlo Park at large. I applaud your commitment, conviction, and authenticity in all that you do when making decisions, even in the face of adversity. I hope you are proud of what you, I, I hope you are proud of what you have accomplished so far, knowing that you have more to go. Congratulations from Marty and Cassandra." The second one, "Hey, Auntie, just wanted to let you know that I'm very proud of all you've done for Menlo Park. I wish you all going best during this next chapter of your career. Love nephew, Cam."
Thank you for your comment. And seeing no further hands raised, Mayor Taylor, you may continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron, and thank, thank you all for the wonderful things that you have said. I'm actually standing here holding my husband's hand so that I do not cry on camera. But I am, I am humbled. And at this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Vice Mayor Combs.
Thanks. And seeing as how, I have a proclamation to read, but, but I'll go with Councilmember Nash first, since she, she's raised her hand. And we can, we can, we can get to the proclamation after the comments.
Thank you. I just, I wasn't sure what the, what the protocol was. Cecilia, I just want to say a few words that you've been an excellent voice for a city this tumultuous year. You've led with a steady hand and a strong, calm voice. And 2020 was a heck of a year to be mayor, and thank you so much.
Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, I just want to express my appreciation, Cecilia. Everyone says you're calm, but you're fierce too. And it's this, it's this quiet intensity that's, you're not, I mean, and the number of meetings that you'll schedule, you just stay after it and stay after it. And it's like, I, my only worry sometimes is that you're going to be so exhausted from so many meetings with so many people in this very hard year. And you just sailed through, did an amazing job for the city. And you're just such a, an amazing voice for racial equity and inclusion in the city is much stronger having, having you on council. So thank you for everything you did this year.
Cool. So I, I'll, I'll chime in and say that, like, since, since I'm talking about when I, when I first met many councilmember. I remember Mayor Taylor, the first time that we met, you had emailed me, and we met at Cafe Bronya. I think this is when you were in lead up to the first, the first run. And, and I just remember that there was this, 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 it didn't really matter what I was going to say to you. You were running. So, but like you were, you were in the information gathering phase. And it was one of those situations like, this train has left the station, you can get on it or you cannot. But, but it is, it is, it is moving out. And, and, and I appreciate from that first moment, that, that every, all of my interactions with you since have run true to, to, to that. Your determination and your, your focus and, and your commitment to, to serving your, your, your community is, 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 is something that I think we should all be appreciative of. And so it has been, you know, and we, we've talked about like sort of serving as mayor, doing what is, you know, has, has been a really sort of upside down year in a pandemic going, you know, literally in, in almost sort of 180 fashion from, from, from plenty to famine, right, to, to revenue excess, to, to, to revenue that, that doesn't, that doesn't meet the needs. And, and so, and the series of, of, of closed sessions that, that followed, right? And through all that, whether it was, was those meetings where we were digging into ways to cut the budget, or seeing, seeing you with a, a bullhorn at, at a protest, you, you rose to the occasion and on all of those situations. And so, which is a testament to you, I think, a testament to your family and a testament to your, to your community. And so it is, it has been an honor serving with you for the past few years. And it, and it's been an honor being on council with you as mayor. And it'll be an honor to continue serving, serving with you. And so I'm going to go back to Councilmember Mueller.
I apologize, it happened again. My phone's blown up. So I have a, I have a text from Rosebick, Rosebickerstaff, who I believe at one time was president of the Bellhaven Neighborhood Association and may still be. She wanted me to pass on to Cecilia how much we have appreciated her term as mayor, representing the whole city and giving presence to District One. Please pass this on to you.
Right. With that, I'm going to read the proclamation now. This is, I think, my first time reading one of these, so please be, be kind. Okay, here we, here we go. "Whereas Cecilia Taylor was first elected to city council in 2018, was selected as mayor pro temp for 2019, and served as mayor in 2020. And whereas Mayor Taylor has demonstrated a dedication and fortitude in leading the city as mayor during the COVID-19 pandemic in the face of uncertainty, and while pushing for enhanced communication, collaborative solutions, and equity for all. And whereas Mayor Taylor worked to secure Menlo Park's dedication of $100,000 in funds to help those in need pay for rent, food, utilities, and other necessities through a partnership with Samaritan House, the creation of programs to support local businesses suffering due to the ongoing pandemic, and a rate assistance pilot program that will help solid waste and water customers make ends meet in the face of rising costs. And whereas Mayor Taylor successfully advocated for environmental justice, adopting the city's ambitious climate action plan, raising awareness about the threat of sea level rise, adopting a transportation master plan to address impacts of traffic and safety and the quality of life of Menlo Park residents, lobbying for and achieving the installation of air quality monitors by the County of San Mateo, and noise monitors through the SFO roundtable. And whereas Mayor Taylor presided over what is likely the most city council meetings in one year in recent memory, called for and served on numerous subcommittees to address important issues such as development, homelessness, and a new multi-generational community campus. And whereas Mayor Taylor demonstrated her commitment to serving all of Menlo Park by making herself available and accessible to all through virtual town hall meetings, regular office hours, and countless emails and phone calls. And now therefore be it proclaimed that the city council recognizes and honors Cecilia Taylor for her dedication and service to the Menlo Park community." And so, and with that, I would ask Mayor Taylor to make some comments if you, if you'd like.
Yes, and, and thank you, Vice Mayor Combs, Councilmember Nash, Councilmember Carlton, and Councilmember Mueller. I appreciate all of your kind words, and definitely the public that called in for comment. I remember when we did the transition last year. And I remember insisting that the picture is the five of us, not just me, because I see this as a collective, collective work. Even with the title isn't mayor and vice mayor, we still need the rest of the council. So I appreciate everything that all of you have done. I appreciate all the kind words that you have shared with me this evening. And I appreciate the work that we have ahead of us, because there definitely is a lot. But I will take this moment just to accept and appreciate the recognition. I am internally grateful, and I am grateful. So thank you. And I believe I am supposed to continue on here. So the next item on our agenda, I am proud to say that we will be swearing in our city council members. Ms. Heron, do we have any public comment on this item?
On, on that note, I will, I will say goodbye and leave you. Hi. I genuinely, from the bottom of my heart, love and respect you guys. I'll miss you. But I'm going to go out with my family now to a downtown restaurant and have dinner. Support your local businesses. And thank you all very much. I, I love that we seem to be leaving on the, the theme of be kind. I think that's a wonderful, wonderful place to leave you. And congratulations to Jen. I know you'll do a great job. Bye, everybody.
Thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item D3, which will be the swearing in of our city council members, City Councilmember Mueller and City Councilmember Wilson, please engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. I'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you may address the city council at this time. This will be the last call for any public comment on item D3, swearing in of city council members Mueller and Wilson. Seeing none, Mayor Taylor.
Ms. Heron, I believe at this time, you swear in the new council members?
Yes, thank you. So at this time, I would ask that, for City Councilmember Mueller, to invite Kristen, Max, and Elle to actually perform the swearing in this evening.
Okay, I have to go actually pull my wife out of a school board meeting. So maybe we should move on to our new council member Wilson while I set it up and grab them all out of their places.
We can do that. Thank you, City Councilmember Mueller. So, City Councilmember Wilson, if you would like to join us at this time.
Good evening.
Hello, Wilson family. I'd like to introduce Gabe, Naomi, Jonah. I don't see Sky. That's their, their fur baby.
There.
Welcome, welcome. And so at this time, Councilmember Wilson, if you could have your family swear you in.
Okay. Ready? I state your name.
I, Jen Wilson.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter. Okay.
Looks like I have a, even you city council members in, or city clerks in my regiment here. Beautifully done. Thank you. All right. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Kristen, Max, and Elle to swear in City Councilmember Mueller.
I, Mayor Mueller. I, Mayor Mueller. Do solemnly affirm. Do solemnly affirm. That I will support and defend. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Great job, thank you. That's so much more fun than having me do it. I like. So we will give City Councilmember Mueller just a couple of minutes here to go back to his workstation, and then Mayor Taylor, you may continue on to item D four.
Excuse me, Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
May I say a few words?
Yes. Councilmember Wallison.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the current council and especially outgoing council member Carlton for her graciousness, both serving on council and helping me during this transition. She's been incredibly generous with advice and her time, and I'm looking forward to seeking her counsel in the years ahead. And I also wanted to thank Mayor Taylor for her incredible leadership during this unbelievable year, and how remarkable it was to watch you in action. And I learned a lot from you, and I can I hope to continue to learn a lot from you in the years to come. And to all the council, I'm really looking forward to serving alongside each and every one of you, and I'm excited for the wonderful things we can do together. I also wanted to thank all of the volunteers that worked on my campaign, my neighbors, my friends, my parents are watching, my sister, my cousin from Chile is tuning in, and I'm just feeling a lot of love and gratitude this evening. And it was especially heartwarming to get to share this experience with my children. My son has been sharing to his class, because I can hear him all day long, that his mom is going to be the new council person. So for him getting to see this play out is it's a real a real joy. I also just want to acknowledge that even in this really happy time, that this is a really hard time, and there's hard times to come. And I wanted to just say that for those of you who have suffered this year, whether it's in small ways or big ways, my heart goes out to you. And for those of you who have done something, big or small, to alleviate the suffering of others, I just want to thank you for for that. When my family moved to Menlo Park eight years ago, we got a lot more than just a house and a home, we got a community. I met my best friend on Nextdoor, we had our first date at the park down the street at Seminary Oaks Park. And I've just continued to meet such incredible people over the year, parents while we were watching gymnastics or swim classes. Everyone that I seem to bump into in Menlo Park really cares about this community. And I've also noticed that the more I've given to the community and the more I've put myself out there and participated, the more I've gotten back. And I can't believe where I am now on that journey of receiving so much from Menlo Park and from the people of Menlo Park, and I'm just so grateful for all of that. And I want to encourage all of those of you who are watching, who may be considering, you know, getting involved in city affairs, city government, in small ways, like just taking a survey that you got emailed, or bigger ways of showing up to meetings or joining a commission, that our city is only as strong as what each and every one of us put into it. And we become so much of a richer community when more of us participate. So I hope you join me in participating in whatever way works for you and your lifestyle during this challenging time. I also want to make sure I don't miss an opportunity to say that while the vaccine is arriving, so is the surge. And I wanted to say for a moment to please continue, I just got the Menlo Park mask. Continue to wear your masks, don't put it down when you're talking to others, keep it up. If you're not feeling good, stay home, don't wait for your test result. If you're just not feeling good, stay home, get tested. There's a new curative booth at Ravenswood and Middlefield in District Three, and you can sign up at curative.com to get tested. And just remember that we all have to look out for each other and be responsible. And if you are planning on traveling over the holidays, when you get back, quarantine, remember your neighbors and those who are more vulnerable to catching COVID. And in closing, I just wanted to say that this year has been, you know, a hard, oftentimes dark year, and tonight is the sixth night of Hanukkah. And Hanukkah teaches us that in darkness, we don't just give up, we light a candle. And so I've been so in awe of all of you in this community who have been lighting candles throughout this dark year, and I look forward to continuing to work together when brighter days come to do what we can to make our community as wonderful and strong as it can be. So thank you, and I look forward to getting to work. And I'll take this off.
Thank you, Councilmember Wallison. Councilmember Mueller?
Just briefly, just want to thank the residents for the city and the city of Menlo Park for the last eight years to represent them. It was an honor to do so, and I'm incredibly grateful to the residents of District Five for the opportunity to carry on. And frankly, for my supporters who helped me. And then I I have to mention, and it was great to have them swear me in, how grateful I am to my wife, Kristin, and the kids, Max and Ellie, for their love and support and for their permission to keep going. So thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations to the both of you. And our next item on the agenda is item D four, which is the selection of the 2021 mayor and vice mayor. And at this time, I'll go to our city clerk. Do we have any public comment?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item D four, selection of the 2021 mayor and vice mayor, please engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. We'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you may address the city council at this time. So final call for public comment on item D four, the selection of mayor and vice mayor for 2021. And seeing no hands raised, Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Herron. And at this time, we are taking nominations for mayor, and I would like to nominate Vice Mayor Combs to be mayor.
I'll second that? Is that a seconding thing?
Yes, we can take a second if there are no other nominations. Seeing none, I have a motion on the floor by Mayor Taylor, and a second by City Councilmember Wallison to select Drew Combs as the mayor for 2021. Any further city council discussion or questions? Seeing none, by roll call vote, City Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
City Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
City Councilmember Wallison?
Hi.
Currently Vice Mayor Combs?
I think I have a conflict here, but I'll vote yes.
I think it's okay. And finally, Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously, so congratulations to Mayor Combs.
And at this time, Ms. Herron, will I be turning the meeting over to our new mayor?
Yes. Thank you, City Councilmember Taylor.
Okay, so and my first act is to take nominations for for Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Mueller?
I'd like to nominate Councilmember Betsy Nash.
And Councilmember Wallison.
Oh, I was going to second that. I forgot that there's a motion and then a thing. I'm new.
So are there any further nominations for Vice Mayor? Seeing none, I have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Mueller, and a second by City Councilmember Wallison to select City Councilmember Nash as Vice Mayor. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice or City Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
City Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
City Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
City Councilmember Wallison?
Yeah.
And Mayor Combs?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Vice Mayor Nash.
Yes, congratulations. Vice Mayor Nash, would you like to make a comment or two?
I've just I am just honored and grateful to be Vice Mayor, and look forward to working with you, Mayor Combs, and the council and staff and the community this upcoming year. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. I also look forward to working with you. I'll say briefly, before we move on to the next item, when I sort of envisioned the possibility of becoming mayor, it wasn't in my my bedroom. But I have to say that, like, it makes to me the honor no less special, and in fact, maybe it makes it even a little bit more more special that I am sort of taking over as mayor during what is, you know, very, very challenging times. I'm honored. I'm also humbled, as I said two years ago, when when my neighbors elected me, the first representative of District Two, that I was humbled that they were entrusting in me this this responsibility. I'm now humbled that you, my colleagues, are entrusting in me this responsibility. I know it's a rotation, but I am humbled that you're entrusting in me this this responsibility to 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 lead the city as as mayor during during what is a challenging time for our community, our country, and and our world. I would be remiss if I didn't use this opportunity to thank my my family, especially my wife, Alexa, who has approached the sacrifice that has been this this surface to the community with a poise and calm, even as there has been, again, so much change in all of our lives, right, because of the pandemic, but even changes in our own life with with moving, I think, a couple of times, and also welcoming a new little one into into our home. And all that, she has been been very accepting and accommodating of the the sacrifice that this has has been. To my my children, I land the newest one, and and daily, I hope that you see in this the value of service to others and the value of service to 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 community, that at the end of the day, we are all in this together. And this year proves that more than than the many prior years, and and that that we either sort of succeed, and hopefully we succeed together by by pulling each other up, or 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 we don't. But but we all we all need to cross the the finish line. As as an aside, I'll say that one of our favorite books these days at bedtime is A Little Blue Truck Goes to the City. And in that in that book, there's a mayor who rides around town in a in a big limousine. And so I've been, over the past couple of weeks, having to disabuse daily of this idea that that there will be any limousine coming to to pick us up any anytime soon. But 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 it is it is it has been, even though there certainly have been sacrifices, it has been an honor to to show them, show my daughter that, again, the value of 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 community. I'll just say that, like, what can you expect of me as mayor besides a kid screaming in the background on these calls? I think for 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 staff, for the community, for my colleagues, I think you can expect what you've gotten for the past two years in approach to the the responsibilities of of this position with with integrity, with a thoroughness, with a fairness, and yes, it's sometimes a doggedness. It is, but but that that is me, and and that that won't change. I'll say, just as a as a final point, I really do hope that that 2021 is 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 a year of recovery, having nothing to do with me being mayor, but 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 as a testament to to all of us, like, to to this community, right, to our our ability to sacrifice when needed, and when this community, I mean, Menlo Park, and I mean the world, right, the ability to sacrifice when needed, a commitment to to science. And 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 for me, I see in those, again, like I say, the seeds of the recovery. And so for me, I I hope that that is a that as mayor, I get I get to see our community, our community recover. So with that, I will I will move on to to the to the next the next agenda item. Thanks for hearing me out. And it is a D five, appoint city council representatives and alternates to various local and regional agency and as liaisons and members to city council advisory bodies. To introduce this item, I'm going to turn to City Clerk Judy here.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So I don't have any formal presentation, not much more information of what was presented in the staff report. Just to sum up the recommendations from staff, we ask that the city council appoint representatives and alternates to various local and regional agencies, as well as appoint committee members to applicable advisory bodies, and finally, appoint liaisons to applicable advisory bodies. And that does conclude my very brief presentation.
So with that said, like, can we, as it makes sense, can we sort of approach these? Does there need to be, like, a motion with regards to these these actions? And can we approach it, like, when it comes to, like, sort of the the standard mayoral, vice mayoral appointments? Can can we just by acclamation accept accept that that will follow tradition on that? Or do we do we need to make some specific action?
So for the assignments that are typically assigned to the mayor and or vice mayor, we can you can direct staff to do that, and that that's not a problem. When it comes to the other assignments that require appointment for either a primary or an alternate, that'll have to be done line by line, but we can do one motion to approve all of the direction from city council.
Okay, well, that works for me. So then we'll skip the mayoral assignments and go straight into the regional assignments. And again, I know there are some spots where where former councilmember Carlton is is the the primary, and so certainly we'll have to have to take action on that. With regards, so I'll start off the there's.
Mayor Combs, pardon my interruption, should we take public comment first?
Yeah, let's do that.
Perfect. So if any member of the public wishes to comment on item D five, appoint city council representatives and alternates to various local and regional agencies, and as liaisons and members to city council advisory bodies, please engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. I'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you may address the city council at this time. Okay, final call for any public comment on D five regarding city council appointments to local and regional agencies and advisory bodies. Seeing no hands raised. to local and regional agencies and advisory bodies. Seeing no hands raised, going to take this opportunity to update our screen. And I have them all listed here. We can go in the order I have that is listed, or, uh, Mayor Combs, if you would like to.
Well, first, in, in, uh, in my notes, it says go to public comment. I'm sorry. And it also said that I should ask if any of my colleagues had any clarifying questions. So I will, before we, like, I sort of, um, before we, we go into that, yeah, I wanted to throw it back and see if there, there are any, any clarifying questions. If my plan, just to be clear, was, again, like, we just go line by line and, 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 you know, see if there, there, there's interest, or if there's a need to change, and then go on like that. But if anyone wants to approach it a little bit differently, I'm totally open. Okay. Well, then, we can, we can start with the Airport Community Roundtable. Councilmember Taylor is, is primary, and, and former councilmember Carlton is, is alternate. Councilmember Taylor, it is your desire to stay the primary on that?
Yes.
Okay. And so is there anyone interested in being the alternate? Councilmember Mueller? Okay.
Yes, nice.
Right. And if we're, we're all good with that, then I will move on to, to, to Basca, the, the Bay Area Water and Supply and Conservation Agency. Currently, councilmember, a former councilmember Keith has been serving as the representative because the terms there are, don't actually mirror the terms on council. It is, it is my understanding that if it is the desire of this council, that we can, um, ask, uh, former councilmember Keith for her resignation and, and appoint, uh, a current member of, of, of the council. And, and so with that background, is, is there the desire to, to move in the direction of, of having a current councilmember serve on, on, on this board? Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, I actually am, uh, interested in serving on this board. So it matches up with some interests I'm doing with the Surf Rider Foundation on their Blue Water Task Force. So I think it would marry that well and also be beneficial to the city.
Overall, I, I'll say that I am supportive of a current councilmember, uh, serving on, on, on the board. But I'll, I'll open up. Councilmember Nash?
So I am also supportive of a current councilmember serving on the board. And if it's possible, I would love to, um, add something that whoever serves is willing to commit to stepping off the board at the time when they are no longer serving on council.
That's a, a fair, fair from my perspective.
I, I will commit to that now. If I am so appointed, when my council term ends, I will step down. Fine.
And I'll just say, if, for some reason in the future, I'm ever on Basca in relation to being on council, if I'm not on council, I will also commit to, uh, to, to stepping down. But, uh, but, yeah, okay, totally right. Do we, should, uh, for, for this, should we have an, an alternate selected? Cause, cause we haven't had one with, with councilmember Keith. Is, it's, do we not do alternates with this appointment? And that's a, a question to anyone on staff who would know the answer.
So this appointment is typically done by the mayor and Vice Mayor, primary being the mayor, Vice Mayor being the alternate. I do not believe an alternate is required of Basca. However, it is a nice to have if the primary is unable to attend.
Okay, well, if, uh, we, we have councilmember Mueller expressing interest in being, uh, primary. Councilmember Nash, would you be interested in being the, the alternate for the secondary?
I'd be happy to be the alternate.
Okay. Um, so then, uh, there's a, uh, Caltrain Modernization Local Policy Group. And so we have, um, uh, in here, uh, councilmember Mueller is the primary and councilmember Nash is the alternate. Is, is that, is that correct? Is, is, uh, yeah, I didn't, I didn't do it. It's, it's councilmember Nash is the primary, right? And then councilmember, uh, Mueller is alternate. Councilmember Williston?
Yeah, um, Mayor Combs, I would be very interested in, uh, serving on this because of District Three and the train. So I'm happy to be the alternate if Betsy wants to, um, serve as the primary.
Councilmember Nash?
So I actually, um, would prefer not to be the primary. Jumping ahead a little bit, I've been the alternate for PCE, which conflicts time-wise, so it's a difficult situation.
I'm happy to be the primary then.
Exactly. That would be great. Um, if no one else is interested, I'm more than happy to be the alternate. But I'm also very happy to step off if someone else-
Yeah. Uh, cause councilmember Mueller, are you, uh, okay with councilmember Williston being the primary and councilmember Nash being the, the alternate? Are you rolling off?
No, I'm fine. Yeah, I'm fine coming off.
Actually-
Councilmember Nash?
Given the, um, given the time conflict, um, if you would like to be the alternate, I would be more than happy to roll off. It's, I can go either way.
I'm, I'm fine then to stay the alternate. That's fine.
Okay. And then these, these two members then are also, uh, de facto then the two members of the Rail Subcommittee, correct? Are those separate? Someone can correct me if, if, if they're separate.
Thank you, Mayor Combs, for pointing that out. Rail Subcommittee would be reflective of the Caltrain Modernization Local Policy Group. So if, uh, city councilmembers Williston and Mueller are okay with also contributing to the Rail Subcommittee, then we can take those as both.
Councilmember Nash?
Um, I forgot that that was a piece of it, because I'm, um, interested in the Rail Subcommittee, although I, um, actually, I would just, um, no, I'm fine. Thank you.
I'm totally fine, Councilmember Nash. You want it?
That's fine. I think I will have more than enough on my plate. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, totally, totally cool. So then we have, um, the City County Association of Governments of San Mateo County. And we currently have former councilmember Carlton as the, the primary and councilmember Nash as the, uh, the, um, the, the alternate. And so obviously, we'll, we'll need a new primary there. Is, is, uh, council, uh, councilmember Taylor?
I'm interested in being primary on C-CAG.
Is, um, is, is there, there any other interests?
Um, I'd be interested in being the alternate if Betsy feels like her schedule's filling up, but I would defer to Betsy if she wants to stick with it.
Councilmember Mueller?
I was also interested in being the alternate, but uh, it's, that's fine. I cannot, it's up to you. It's, if people feel strongly about it, I can wait. But if, if, I'd love to do it next year if I'm not doing it this year. So.
Um, it's so hard doing this process, because you don't know how everything else is gonna shake out. Can we come back? Can we see how other things, like, how much is filling up, or is that awkward?
So, but, uh, okay, so, but then, uh, councilmember Taylor has expressed a desire to be the, the primary. Um, and so, so we can hold that and say that we're gonna revisit the pri, the alternate.
I would appreciate that, because then, um, depending how other things, that I'll know more about our schedules and everything.
Totally fair. Um, there is, in the County of Santa Clara Community Resources Group for Stanford University, and councilmember Nash is the, the primary, and councilmember, uh, uh, Taylor is the alternate. Is, is there any desire for a change in personnel there, or is, is keeping that fine? Okay, cool. Let's, um, Emergency Services Council, um, San Mateo County JPA, we have, uh, a, a councilmember, uh, Taylor as the, the, the primary, and I'm the, the alternate. Are you, are you fine with continuing to be the primary, councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Is there, is there anyone? I'm also fine with being the alternate. But if there's anyone who has a desire to be the alternate, then I'm also fine with rolling off. Okay, well, then we'll, we'll, we'll keep that. There is the, uh, Facebook Local Community Fund, which it has, is this, uh, councilmember Mueller is the primary and councilmember Carlton is the alternate? Councilmember Mueller?
I'm happy to come off of it. So I've been on it for a while. Happy to come off of it.
Okay, so then we, we have two open spots, the primary and the, the alternate for the, the, uh, the Facebook Local Community Fund. Obviously, I'm recused, so, so I can't be on that. My councilmember Taylor?
I'm happy to be primary.
Okay. And so is, uh, councilmember Nash, Williston, would either one of you like to be, uh, the, the alternate for the Facebook Local Community Fund?
I would be happy to, but I'm fine not to as well.
Yeah, if you need someone, I'll do it, but-
Okay, well, so we'll, we'll go with councilmember Nash and see who's the first one to talk. Okay, the, uh, the Grand Boulevard Task Force, and so, uh, uh, current personnel is councilmember Nash as the, the primary, and I'm the alternate. Again, councilmember Nash, do you desire some, some change, or would you prefer to remain the primary?
Um, so I actually would like to roll off, but the task for, the Grand Boulevard is no longer meeting as an initiative. They've basically are trying to have annual convenings, which they have not done because of the COVID. But essentially, they've decided that they're ready for a new phase, and so they've, they are transitioning to a new, um, structure. And so I, um, do not feel, I think we still should have someone there, but it may not, may or may not meet. And I'm fine rolling off.
Okay. Does, does anyone have a desire? Councilmember Williston?
Yeah, I'm happy to take it, unless anyone else wants it.
So you, you'll be the primary, and I'll be the, I'll, I'll stay the secondary or the alternate? Um, the Hart Port Member Agency Committee, uh, this range, uh, this currently has, um, councilmember Mueller as the primary and councilmember Nash as the alternate. Is, uh, is, is there, councilmember Nash?
So, um, I'm not sure if this is clear, um, to everyone, but this is actually a housing, um, board, and it has not met all year. The, we're one of the member agencies, and it has not met all year. So, but it looks like an interesting board, but I'm fine rolling off if someone else is interested.
Councilmember Mueller?
I'm happy to stay on, if, no, if, if we need to fill it, like, I'm happy to stay on it. But there's strong desire for someone else to take it, and I can roll off as well.
Okay. Uh, councilmember Williston?
Yeah, I'm willing to serve on that one, um, but I'm not gonna-
Okay, so, yeah, so then, let's then keep councilmember Mueller as the primary and councilmember Williston, you can be the alternate. And, okay, so then we have, uh, PCE, currently councilmember Carlton is the primary, and then councilmember Nash is the alternate. I'm, uh, councilmember Nash, I'm assuming that you want to move into the primary role. Okay, so what's the interest in that alternate? Councilmember Mueller?
If no one else is interested in alternate, I'm happy to take it, since councilmember Nash and I end up doing a lot of environmental, environmental work together. So.
That's fine with me. Any, any objection?
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm interested, but I'm, I really respect the work you guys are doing, and, and that's fine. Yeah, I think-
You know what? Actually, you know what? Councilmember Williston, I really believe it's important to, like, share the subject matter. So if you want it, why, why don't you go ahead and jump in?
Why not? How about, if, if you, maybe this is the time, then, if you wanna take C-CAG and I'll, I take B? Does that sound reasonable?
That sounds great. Yeah, that sounds great. I think the more, the, the more people involved in this matter, the better.
Wonderful. Thank you. See how that worked itself out just one?
Okay, so, uh, cool. So next we have the Creek, uh, JPA. I'm the primary and, and councilmember, uh, Taylor is the alternate. I, I have a desire to remain the primary. Councilmember Taylor, do you still, um, have a desire to, to remain the alternate?
Yes.
Okay. Um, is there any objections to that? Okay, totally cool. The San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District, this has, uh, councilmember Carlton as the primary. And so is this one of those, uh, City Clerk Karen, does this run separately? Does this appointment run separately than the council appointment?
So for the Mosquito and Vector Control District, this is, um, a city council-appointed position. This year, we had, um, a separate city council item, appointing city councilmember Carlton to this board, and then most recently, we extended that term, I believe, through 2023, if I'm not mistaken, because it's a four-year term.
Right, and, and councilmember Mueller?
Um, I know councilmember Carlton just recently attended a training for this, and this historically has been something that we have appointed a member of the city to. I'd be very comfortable leaving her in this role, if, if, if the council's supportive of that. I know she's passionately been attending trainings for it.
Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. I actually, I am very much in favor of keeping, um, councilmember Carlton on, or, I'm sorry. Cat, Catherine Carlton on it. I, what I wanted to, um, say was that this is actually a slightly different, um, situation, I think, than the water board where we kept a councilmember on. And I wanted to just point that out and see if in the future, perhaps, we can put it in a slightly different, um, category, so that it's not, it's on the sheet, but it's not confused with other appointments through traditionally council members.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor Nash. This, um, appointment does not require the appointment of a city councilmember. It can be a member of the public, a resident of Menlo Park. It's not specific to city council, so thank you again, Vice Mayor, for pointing that out. And going forward, staff will try and make that more clear of a distinction.
Cool. Okay, so we're, we're all, we're all good with that. And there is no need for it, an alternate there, right?
That is correct.
Because it's a separate appointment. Okay, totally cool. So then we have the South, uh, Bay Side Waste Management Authority. And so, uh, we have, uh, former councilmember Carlton as a primary and, and then, uh, councilmember Taylor as the alternate. First, I'll turn to you, councilmember Taylor. Do you have a desire to move into the, the primary spot?
This is for, do we, I don't know, okay, this is the fourth Thursday. Can we come back to this one? I just want to make sure and look at the schedule, so that there is an overlap?
Okay, totally. Is there, uh, since, since then, if, if, assuming the schedule works out, councilmember Taylor would take over the primary, we still would have the alternate, uh, open? Is, is there, um, an interest from anyone else on council? If, if not, then I'll, I'll, I'll take the, the, either the secondary or primary, depending on what, uh, works for councilmember, uh, Taylor's schedule. Does that, does that sound, sound right? Although I, I think that the issue, though, here is that there is a conflict with the, uh, the Creek JPA meeting. Because I, I think that that came up when I was the alternate last year here. So, um, I don't, I don't know that, like, if, if I am the alternate, then that, that should be fine, but I, I probably won't, won't be able to serve as, as, as the primary. So, so maybe if, if, if your schedule doesn't work out, councilmember Taylor, we can, we can revisit the issue.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, cool. So, uh, Clerk Karen, are we, are we all cool with the regional assignments from your perspective?
Yes. Um, and just for, uh, clarity, back to C-CAG, would just like to confirm, let me get that section. We have the primary as city councilmember Taylor and the alternate as city councilmember Mueller. Is that correct?
Correct.
Perfect. Then, yes, we can return, um, to SBWMA after we look at the advisory body appointments.
Okay, cool. And so, uh, then the, uh, the first in the sort of city council advisory bodies is the Finance and Audit Committee, and currently, um, there, there are no sort of, you know, primary or alternate, just two members. It's currently me and councilmember Mueller. I have a desire to roll off of it. Uh, councilmember Mueller, uh, do, do you have a desire to remain?
I've been on it for a long time, so I think it's, I think it's probably good to have other people, uh, be, but, but, but if the council desires me to stay for continuity, so there's one person who's continuing with it, I can. But, um, but I think it's, but, but if people are ready to jump in there, I'm, I'm also ready to roll off.
Okay. So, so we have either one or two spots open on the Finance and Audit Committee. Uh, councilmember Nash?
Thank you. I was just wondering whether, um, there is, if this could be an appropriate- there is if this could be an appropriate time to actually have this act more like a the commissions where and I believe Mayor Combs and councilmember Mueller, since you've been participating, you know more. But is it possible to actually have this be a regular liaison as opposed to two voting members?
Well, I'll I'll chime in first and then let like councilmember Mueller chime in on that. And maybe even the city clerk has has, I think, some some comments on that, maybe. I I I have been supportive of that. I don't think that that proposal had three votes last time we discussed it. And and I know if I'm remembering the counterargument that that there was a concern that when it came to talking about sort of finances and reviewing the budget, that you wanted councilmembers sort of with eyes on that process and that engagement between the public that's appointed to that 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 committee and and staff. But so I remember that being the counterargument, but I I have, in theory, shared shared your position on this, councilmember Nash. But but I do remember that being being the counterargument. Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, in in the past as well, and I remember I remember former Mayor Rich Klein talking about the fact that it was always important to have one person be there for continuity's sake. And so you'd have one person roll on and one person stay. And so you always had an idea what had happened before, because it's like it's it really is a continuing dialogue between staff and those committee members around what's happening on the Finance and Audit Committee. And then I also think I've also remember the argument that having two members is important because they might see it differently in terms of what's in terms of what's been reviewed. So to be able to bring different perspectives on that to counsel is something so important as the budget's important.
Sorry, well, well, councilmember Mueller has said he he would be willing to stay. I I mean, if there's if there's no interest from anyone else, then then I I'm I'm totally fine with with staying on. And again, you know, maybe at a later date, we can sort of revisit the the possibility of a transition to commission and see if they are if the the vote count on that has changed since 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 the last time we 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 approached this this topic. Okay, so so then the the personnel for for the Finance and Audit Committee will will stay as as Mueller and Combs. So then there is the advisory body liaisons. And so there is there is complete streets commission, which I am on the which I'm I'm okay. Well, first, maybe we'll we'll take it the the councilmember Wilson approach. And let's just sort of turn into a scrum. Let's let's sort of maybe deal with these holistically versus going going down the line. Councilmember Wilson?
Yeah, I appreciate that, Mayor Combs. And I think that the two that I'm most excited about would be housing or planning. And, you know, I'm happy to do both, but I'd be, you know, happy to have one of those. If so, that's kind of where I'm thinking.
Okay, and I'll just sort of throw in and then I'll I'll shoot to it. I'm only interested in parks and rec. And so and so that that's my interest. And I would also, if there if there is no one else, I would also be willing to do to do library if if there's there's no one else interested in it. Councilmember Nash?
Excuse me, I have an interest in staying on the EQC.
And my apologies, Vice Mayor Nash. So, okay, so then let's say that like so I I think you you saying on the EQC is is fine. I see I see no objection to that. I see no objection to councilmember Wilson taking over planning. Let's say that there is no objection to me taking over parks and rec. And so is is there? So then we'll go so complete streets. Is is there anyone interested in 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 taking over that? If there is not, then I'm I'm totally fine with with staying the liaison. No interest. Okay, well, that.
Need someone for complete streets. It's kind of my wheelhouse, but I'm trying to branch out and become a generalist here.
Is is there someone who would want to do library? Okay, so then, because if not, then I'm going to take a library and then councilmember Wilson, I'm going to ask if you're okay with taking complete streets in in planning. Is that good? Okay, so then 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 wait, councilmember Taylor.
Love Taylor and Mueller.
So, yeah, okay, so let's I I mean, so do would you prefer library or or what whatever? Everything's on the table. Sorry. You can if there's if is is there? Because I didn't notice that you weren't already there represented by something. Is is there? Is there a commission irrespective of the discussion we just had? Is there a commission that you want to be on?
Who are you speaking to, Mayor Combs?
Councilmember Taylor. Did I not?
I lost I lost audio for a moment, so I didn't hear the part.
Oh, okay. So so is there of the the commission liaisons? Is there one that you have a preference to be on?
No.
Okay, would so if if we're saying like if it's between complete streets and library, is there one that you would prefer over the other?
I I'll I'll do complete streets.
Okay, okay, so then then we will have councilmember Taylor for complete streets. And then councilmember Mueller, would you be okay with library?
May I make a suggestion that someone on the subcommittee for the the new library be the library liaison?
And and we're, yeah, and so so I am not on that. So who who's on that subcommittee?
So it used to be councilmember, it used to be former councilmember Carlton and councilmember Taylor. And so we need to, I think, appoint, I thought it's not on here, we probably need to appoint someone to that subcommittee, which is probably coming later in our next item. And then that person presumably would be liaison to the library commission. I think the subject matters closely overlap.
Don't disagree. And so then councilmember Taylor. Are you? Does that logic sort of work for you or you you disagree?
No, the logic works for me, and I I am interested in staying on the subcommittee for the new campus. So if that means instead of being on complete streets to be on the library commission, I'm comfortable with that as well.
Councilmember Nash?
So I'm interested in being on the Menlo Park Council, that campus subcommittee and would be if I don't know if anyone else is. But I'd be happy to serve on that. And if I do do that, I'd be happy to pick up the library commission.
Okay, so then it's so then for that subcommittee, we have vice mayor Nash and councilmember Taylor. And then the question is just which one of you will be the liaison to 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 library? Is there? Is there? I I would say, because, you know, maybe councilmember Nash, you so so then you'll have library and you'll have EQC, and then councilmember Taylor will have complete streets. Because at least one person has to have two, right? And then, but wait, two. But then where are you at, councilmember Mueller? Because what about housing, councilmember Nash? Are you? Would you like to stay on housing? Because then I actually I have you down for three.
I'm interested in staying on housing, but I believe that councilmember Wilson also expressed an interest. And so I would be fine with. I'm I'm easy.
Um, yeah, my so then, though, if if housing goes between one of you, then we don't have a a liaison assignment for councilmember Mueller, because I I said I was going to take on parks and rec.
You know, this year I'm fine with going with that one, if you guys are okay with it. I'm happy to take one if you'd like me to, but I'm looking at the I'm looking at the other things I have in my plate. I have I have a lot. So I love what I have, but it's a lot, so.
Yeah, and I think for me, I I think, I mean, I would love to have housing and planning, because I think there's going to be a lot of overlap between them coming up.
Well, it seems like councilmember Nash was amenable to that.
I'll defer to you, Vice Mayor Nash.
Yeah, thank you. So then then, because then Vice Mayor Nash would have EQC and and library. And then councilmember Wilson, you would have planning and housing. Then I would have parks and rec. Councilmember Taylor would have complete streets, right? And that's everybody. City clerk Karen?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Combs. I was just going to basically do what you just did and just track down what we have decided to this point. I have city councilmember Taylor as the complete streets liaison, vice mayor Nash as the EQC liaison, city councilmember Wilson for housing commission, vice mayor Nash for library. I have Mayor Combs for parks and rec. City councilmember Wilson for planning commission.
Yeah, councilmember Mueller, I just want to make sure you don't want housing or planning, because I don't want to take two and you get none if you if you want one.
I I'm happy to take either, but you know, but honestly, if you want them, I'm fine with it. Like, it's not, it doesn't, it's not rubbing me the wrong way at all. I think it's great, so. But 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 happy to take happy to take either if makes if it if you think it makes sense, so.
If I take on too much and I'm drowning, I'll I'll let you guys know.
Yeah, no problem at all. Happy to do. Happy to do it.
Okay, well, cool. So then I I think we're all set on the advisory body liaisons. And so then the are we are we appointing outside agency liaisons now?
Yes, for the flood and sea level rise agency, the Menlo Park City School District, and then the Menlo Park Fire Protection.
Okay.
And then following that would be the downtown street closure task force.
Okay, and is it? Do we not have? We we had members on this for for 2020, right? They're just not listed here, right?
We did not.
Oh, we did not. Okay. Okay, so then and and are we we appointing two people or just one liaison?
Again, I do not believe that the alternate is required. So that would be, again, just a nice to have, but the primary for the FSLR would be acquired. And then just single members to the three remaining Menlo Park City School District, Protection District, and the downtown.
Okay, well, let's let's go. If if there if there's interest from two, then we'll we'll do the secondary. And if not, then we'll do the just the primary. Councilmember Mueller and then councilmember Taylor.
I was just gonna say, I know this is Menlo Park City School District, but you might just want to have it just be school districts, because it's more. And it's kind to my colleagues, what I'd say is the people who sign up for this expect a lot of work. With arena numbers coming up, we're going to have a lot of interactions with our school districts. So.
With that, so then we'll councilmember Taylor, I'm sorry.
Well, I just wanted to share with you what I'm interested in, and that's the flood and sea level rise agency and the Menlo Park Fire District.
Okay, so with the councilmember Nash. Vice Mayor Nash?
I would be interested in being an alternate for the flood and sea level rise agency, if that's available.
So then if we is it okay with everyone, councilmember Taylor as the primary and the vice mayor as the secondary for the the sea level rise? Okay, so then we've we've got that one. And then let's just let's do the the downtown street closure task force. So that currently is is former councilmember Carlton and councilmember Taylor. Councilmember Taylor, do you have a desire to remain on that?
Only if no one else wants it. I'm just looking at my own schedule.
Yeah.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Of course.
Um, there are, especially when we get to the next agenda item, there's some other down. There's a lot of downtown things, and I'm a bit, I'd love some clarification on which of those is doing what. And I know there was various, I mean, I know there's enough room downtown for everybody, but just what's the where are the lines on all these different committees and subcommittees?
So what? So with the the downtown street closure, again, staff and everyone else feel free to chime in. Again, the main focus of that was in connection with the the proposal to sort of close streets in connection with the pandemic, right? And so so then so that's my understanding of it. And I know that they've there's been a lot of liaising with the the Chamber of Commerce in relation to that 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 exercise or that that project. And and I do think that they have some of the stuff that has come under their purview has been related to also the the sort of the pot, the the little sort of parklets or what do you call them? Where where dining is is set up outside. So I think that that's my understanding of of that. Someone can correct me if I'm wrong. Councilmember Mueller?
Well, I wasn't going to correct you. I think you're right, but I I would I would be happy to do the downtown street closure task force.
Okay, and so then then councilmember Wilson to make sure we're so then what what's the other sort of, you know, committee or commission?
There's one called Business on the next item. And then how that differs. And then I guess this is the Chamber of Commerce city liaison.
Well, the the I'll let I'll let the city manager go.
So I think there's been a lot of activity with the chamber in the downtown this year. But to councilmember Wilson's comment, I think we need just one group. So if the council could form a subcommittee, they could also interact with the chamber on the business task force, if that makes sense. So just so I think we could eliminate the outside agency task force and instead just appoint a subcommittee, which is listed on the next item as business. So just make that a business-related, business slash chamber-related council subcommittee.
So so city manager Jerome Robinson, would that one be on that economic?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's that. Oh, there's also one called Downtown Vibrancy also, which looks.
There should all be one. Let's just have one group working on it. I think that'll be really helpful.
So I'm definitely interested, but if other people really feel strongly.
Just so I'm clear, though, those other weren't aren't they disbanded? Or or inactive, some of those other ones, like like downtown vibrancy, right? That.
Right. I guess I just wanted to understand, like, who, like, as a someone that's been watching council, it's been a little confusing who's working on what. So I just want to get a sense of what's left. But it sounds like I think one committee that does all types of things makes a lot of sense. My sense is a lot of us care a lot about downtown, or all of us do, so. But if there's people that feel passionately about it, I'm going to have a busy first year, so.
So and I I want to be clear, if I may, that it's not just the downtown. It's also the economic development work throughout the city that we'd be working on, the subcommittee we'd be working on. And if I if I can, just one more comment. I just want to make sure before we move away from the council designee for the flood and sea level rise, that it's clear that the city of Menlo Park, this would be someone attending on behalf of the council, but we are not on the board at this time, and we wouldn't have a vote. And we may at a future time, but just not currently.
Okay. So I'm I'm if, as I think we left it off, councilmember Mueller expressed an interest in being on the downtown street closure task force, which we have morphed into a larger sort of downtown sort of economic development subcommittee. I I would be specifically since I I think I serve as liaison to the the chamber. I'm totally fine with 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 serving on on that sort of that new 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 downtown street closure sort of economic development commission. Committee.
Mayor Combs, if I may, I believe what the city manager is saying about the downtown, the business, the economic development would be a subcommittee, which is something we could bring up at the next item and then actually removing this task force and having it morphed into that subcommittee opposed to morphing a subcommittee into a task force. But we can do it either way. We can either remove this street closure task force and then in, you know, embed it into the subcommittee.
Yeah, let let that then. Yeah, that, that seems like the easier and more logical approach, so that works for me.
And is there council consensus for that?
Yeah, sorry.
It's cool with me, no matter how we name it, we still do it.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Wolf, and then, then I'll go to the city attorney.
I just wanted to know, were we gonna return to the school district? Or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, we were, because there's still the school district and the fire district, although I know Councilmember Taylor has expressed an interest in the fire district. But, but yeah, my plan was to go back to them.
I'm happy, I'm happy, oh, should I comment on that now, or do you want me to wait?
Well, I think that the city attorney is gonna comment on this, the subcommittee task force. And so let's go to her, and then we can come back to that.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So the, I think the Subcommittee on Business and Economic Development as currently envisioned, first of all, it, you know, belongs in the second agenda item, so we can discuss it then and make the appointment in connection with that agenda item. But also, I did want to point out that it's likely the way the current committee now is scoped is that it will be a standing committee as opposed to an ad hoc committee. And the significance of that is that standing committees are Brown Act committees. And so you will have to have agendas and invite the public to those meetings. The reason why it would be a standing committee is that it's dealing with a whole range of issues, not just a discrete issue that ad hoc committees typically deal with. So that, I just wanted to pop on now, because that may be relevant to whether you want to form this, a larger committee, or whether you want to keep the business elements in separate ad hoc committees.
Thanks for that, that additional information. Is there, it seems as though the route we were going in was, you know, making, you having one source of truth, for lack of a better word, in the subcommittee. So that, again, that comes with certain restrictions, as the city attorney enumerated. Does that dissuade any of us from going down that, that route? Of sort of, again, like encompassing everything, sort of economic development downtown-related in the subcommittee, versus, again, keeping this separate downtown task force? The Council, Vice Mayor Nash?
So I've typically found that standing committees are a little bit more difficult because there's only two council members and they can't speak to each other, as several of us have noticed in these. I'm wondering if there's an opportunity to make it a business subcommittee that's maybe specifically related right now to the pandemic, and therefore can stay as a regular subcommittee as opposed to, and then in a future date, when we figure out what's happening with the pandemic, how things look, then it could become a longer-standing subcommittee. But right now, it would just be a subcommittee where the members could interact as a subcommittee as opposed to having it a more formal committee.
City Attorney Silver.
Yes, that would certainly satisfy the Brown Act in terms of forming a very limited-duration ad hoc committee, and it would not have to be a standing committee under those circumstances.
Okay, so then we are, so at this point, though, like, with regards to the task force, we're going to essentially not appoint anyone here and disband it. And so there's a general consensus with that approach, correct? Okay, and then, and then we'll take this up with, with regards to the next, the next agenda item. And so then that takes us back to, to, we'll, we'll start with the Fire District liaison. And so Councilmember Taylor has, is currently there and is, I think, expressing interest. So is there anyone who would like to join as an alternate? That are, are we, are we comfortable with just leaving Councilmember Taylor as the liaison? Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, you know, because we were working on the triangle together, and that involves so much work with the Fire District, happy to be the alternate. I think there's crossover work.
Okay, cool. So then, then we have, have it set for, for that. And so now the, the school district, and so we need either one or two people. Is there interest from, from anyone in council? Councilmember Wolison.
Yeah, I could do either of those, either primary or alternate on that.
Is there interest from anyone else? So then I'll, how about this, Councilmember Wolison, you'll be the primary and I'll be the alternate? Does that, does that work?
Yeah.
Okay, so then I think that that is everything for this agenda item, correct?
Thank you, Mayor Combs, yes. And so what we would need is a motion and a second to approve the appointments made.
Do you have a motion? Do you do that, or do I do that?
Yes, you can, you can definitely call for the motion.
Okay, so, okay, we have a motion from Councilmember, from Vice Mayor Nash.
Thank you. So with the motion by Vice Mayor Nash, do we have a second? A second by City Councilmember Taylor to approve the appointments to city, city council representatives and alternates to various local and regional agencies, and as liaisons and members to city council advisory bodies. Is there any further city council discussion or questions? Seeing none, by roll call vote, City Councilmember Mueller.
Yes.
City Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
City Councilmember Wolison.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nash.
Yes.
And Mayor Combs.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
And with that, we move on to item D six, right? So appoint city councilmember to various standing and ad hoc subcommittees, disband inactive ad hoc subcommittees, and direct a review of ad hoc subcommittee objectives and estimated duration. So with that, I'll turn it to the city clerk to introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So similar to the last item, I don't have a formal presentation. Staff recommendation is to make appointments to city council standing committees, to appoint city council members to the active ad hoc subcommittees, to disband the inactive city council ad hoc subcommittees, and then direct those ad hoc subcommittees that are still active to return to January with objectives and estimated duration. Similar to what interim city attorney Cara Silver had said, there has to be an objective and an estimated duration for these to remain as ad hoc subcommittees and not be a standing committee, which is under the Brown Act. And that does conclude my presentation.
Okay, so I'm, was assuming, we just approached just like we did the last agenda item, is that okay? Okay, so then we're starting with the community grant funding. It was Councilmember Carlton and I, I'm fine with staying on it, which means that we, public comment.
Perfect. So thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, I would like to ask any member of the public who wishes to comment on item D six, appoint city council members to various standing and ad hoc subcommittees, disband inactive ad hoc subcommittees, and direct a review of ad hoc subcommittee's objectives and estimated duration. To engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen, I'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you may address the city council at this time. Final call for any public comment on item D six regarding the appointments to city council standing and ad hoc subcommittees. And seeing no hands raised, Mayor Combs, we can continue in the same fashion as before.
Okay, thanks. Hopefully, I will, I will start remembering public comment one day. Okay, so we're, as I was saying, so there's the community grant funding, which is currently former councilmember Carlton and I, I'm fine with staying on it. And so, meaning we need at least one new person, but also if there, if there are two people who are interested in, I'm fine with rolling off of it completely. So is there at least one person interested in serving on the community grant funding, standing committee? Councilmember Taylor. So then, then Councilmember Taylor and I, does that work for everyone? Okay, so then the rail subcommittee is, is set, correct? And so then we go to, to, to business. And so, and then this is a sort of an ad hoc subcommittee that will at least in the interim be focused on, on a lot of the business-related sort of issues in connection with the pandemic. So currently, it is, it is Councilmember Carlton and former Councilmember Carlton and Councilmember Taylor. So I'll go to you first, Councilmember Taylor. Is it, is it your desire to, to continue, or do you want to roll off?
Since the committee, I think it's only existed, I want to say, less than four months, I would be happy to stay on.
Okay, and so is there another council member interested in also serving and taking, former councilmember Carlton's spot? Mr. Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, I'm interested.
Okay, so, so then we'll have councilmembers Taylor and Mueller. So then there is the city attorney recruitment, which has been former councilmember Carlton and Councilmember Nash. I'm assuming the councilmember Nash wants to remain, or maybe not. Vice Mayor Nash.
I'm actually wondering whether we still need the recruitment committee at this point. I know we still have some discussions, but I don't know that the committees, that this committee is actually beneficial at this point, although I'm happy to serve on it.
Yeah, let's, let's go to, to maybe the city manager for that, the answer to that question, because I don't, I don't know.
Good evening. I, I think perhaps we could wait to appoint members to the subcommittee to a later time.
Okay. That works for me. So, okay, so we'll put a pause on that one. And so then we have the city manager priorities, which is currently Taylor and Carlton. And so Councilmember Taylor, are you, would you like to remain on this, the city manager priorities ad hoc committee?
Yes, I'm interested in this.
Okay, okay, so, okay, now you, Councilmember Wolison.
I apologize. I just had a clarifying question about what this is exactly. I apologize for not asking it earlier.
No, totally fair. I'll let the city manager come back on. Or maybe Councilmember Taylor can, I haven't served on it, so I don't, I don't know that I know exactly how it operates in practice. And so, so either the city manager or Councilmember Taylor.
Well, I think this could be accomplished in one of two ways. I mean, it could be a subcommittee, but we could also move to a quarterly update with the city manager and the city council in closed session as a personnel review. And that way, all five council members could be present.
I'm supportive of that, that, that approach. Is there, is there consensus? Okay, totally cool, right? So we're, we're just getting rid of these ad hoc committees. So then there's the Claim and Action Plan, which is currently Mueller and Nash. And so I'll go to you guys, do you have a desire to remain in these roles? Okay, totally, totally cool. There is the Connect Menlo Community Amenities, which is currently Nash and Taylor. Is there a desire for that to remain consistent?
Yes.
Cool. Emergency Response Homeless Encapment in Bayfront, currently Taylor and Mueller. Is that so good? Okay.
Yes.
And then we have Facebook Village Development Agreement and Negotiations, which is Nash and Taylor, I think, is support for that, that remaining, okay. Inventory Existing, Proposed and Potential Citywide Development, which is Nash and Taylor. And we're okay with that. Councilmember Wolison.
Thank you. This is another question. What is this? It sounds like, like.
Yeah, I think, I could try to explain it, but I think Councilmember Nash or Taylor will do a better, a better job. So I'll kick it to them. Yeah, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Nash.
So essentially, this was sort of morphed out of what Councilmember Taylor and I were recommending for the community amenities, and then also working with staff to take a look at what is currently citywide development. And it's just looking at how it's presented and numbers, and just making sure that we're getting all the numbers together. And I don't know if it, I mean, honestly, I was surprised to see it as a separate subcommittee, because my understanding was it was sort of rolling, we were going to do community amenities, and then it was going to roll into this, but I'm happy any which way. And I personally would like to still serve on it.
And then, so is, is, is that the same for you, Councilmember Taylor? And then I'll go to the city manager.
Yes.
Okay. City Manager Jerome Robinson.
Well, I think, given the overlap between community amenities and really what this is, the subcommittee, which I think much of the work has been accomplished, maybe since we're on a roll, this would be a great opportunity to eliminate yet another subcommittee.
I'm, I'm fine with that, is there, there consensus? So, yeah, we would, because the personnel is the same. So, yeah, okay, that totally works with me. So then, okay, so the, the, the city attorney, I think we skipped finalizing the S, and the, the Waste Management Representative. And so, and so does the, or did I get that, that message late? I got a message from the city clerk, but maybe my, my mobile is delayed. Do we need to go back to anything?
So we can, we can do that now, if you don't mind. I did forget to go back, this is for item D five for the SBWMA. We wanted to go back after reviewing your calendars for all that you graciously signed up for. So wanted to either confirm the primary and alternate as Taylor and Combs, or if there was an interest from another city council member for these.
Yeah, I was just sort of trying to, again, I'm okay with being the alternate, but there, there's a direct conflict with the, with the Crete GPA. It couldn't be a primary. But Councilmember Taylor, are you okay with being a primary or not?
Yes, I checked my schedule, so it should work fine. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. So we will leave this as is. I appreciate you coming back to this, and now we can resume our subcommittees. Thank you.
Okay, no worries. So sorry, sorry, I skipped it. Okay, so then we were at the, where were we?
We were at the Menlo Park.
Okay, okay, thank you. And so that's currently Taylor and Carlton. I'm assuming Councilmember Taylor wants to remain on there. And so is there anyone else that would like to serve on that with Councilmember Nash or Vice Mayor Nash? Okay, so then, so then we have Nash and Taylor for the Menlo Park Community Campus. And then there is the Quality of Life Ordinance, which is Taylor and Carlton. So Councilmember Taylor, is it your desire to remain in that committee?
Yes, and Councilmember Carlton and I have yet to meet on that item. So it'd be perfect to have someone, someone new, but I would love to stay on it.
Yeah, can you, because I'm gonna preempt. You give us a brief Cliff Notes version of what, what the Quality of Life Ordinance.
Yes, Mayor Combs. So the Quality of Life Ordinance, it's, it came from the idea of creating a, I believe it was hate crime. It was about developing some type of hate crime ordinance or some way of reporting because of information that some residents were sharing. So it ended up being Quality of Life Ordinance instead of Hate Crime Ordinance. And that's all the information I have, Councilmember Wolison.
Okay, and so, and so we have, we have Taylor. Do we have anyone else who's interested in serving on this? Do we have anyone else who's interested in in serving on this? If not, then I'll I'll you can swap Carlton out for me. And so and then we have the Willow Road Highway 101 interchange improvements. I'm gonna assume that the we're okay with the current personnel, seeing as though those are the two representatives whose districts are sort of bifurcated by the by the interchange. So, okay, and so then we have these disbanded inactive ad hoc subcommittees and and just sort of reviewing them. Is this okay? Does this comport with everyone's understanding? Or is there any of these subcommittees someone wants to bring from the dead? Councilmember Mueller.
I'm the West Menlo Triangle Annexation. Don't remember how it got, how it became dead, but they're still a large well, there's still a group, a group of neighbors in the triangle who want to be annexed into the city. So, but I think we can probably, I think for now, what we should do is table that and pick it up during council goal setting discussion.
So, yeah, fair point. Councilmember Mueller, I also, when I saw that that was on this sort of disbanded inactive, I think my heart sank a little bit, because I just know all of the work that those neighbors have put. Again, I also know on the resourcing side from the city that it is a challenge to make this a priority. But I know also, again, like I say, all the work those residents have already put into this effort. And so and so, yeah, I think to your point, we we take it, take this up at a goal setting. Okay, so then outside of that, then are we are we good on this city clerk hearing, and we just need a motion? And councilmember Wilson.
Yeah, I'll move adoption of all of these assignments.
Cool, I'll second. Okay, councilmember, we councilmember Mueller and then councilmember Nash.
There's just something that's on my mind, and I'm just gonna, and it's regarding the climate action plan subcommittee. I'm fine to stay there now of councilmember Nash, but I would like to both talk with our liaisons for the PC, I mean, for the EQC. And also, I encourage councilmember Wilson to think about about that. And the reason why is I know that you have an interest in it. And I have a very, I mean, I have a very strong interest in it, but I'm going to remain strongly engaged in that and working with Menlo Spark and others. And I'm really a strong opponent of bringing people into their areas of interest and getting them involved in it as quick as possible. So so I think we should all think about that and maybe maybe revisit that.
I'm I'm really, I appreciate that comment, and you're spot on. It's an area of interest of mine. And it's funny, it's like the gift of the Magi or something. I was thinking you have so much momentum on this, like you should keep with it. But if you want to stay on it for now, and then we, like you said, revisit it. Oh, that sounds great. I appreciate that.
Great. We'll talk, I'll talk about, we can, I'll talk, councilmember Nash and I can talk about it with the cap liaison from and then figure it out. But I think it's important to think about, so.
Wonderful.
And councilmember Nash.
Thank you. I was wondering if we could see that above this, where we see actually the council assignments for a minute before we vote, because I may one other comment. Okay, so the way we've left the city attorney recruitment blank, I'm wondering if we could move up the West Menlo Triangle Annexation into the active but unfilled, just so it doesn't get lost when the inactive are taken off.
I'm in complete support of that.
I'm supportive also.
Yeah.
Is there any obstruction to that? Okay. And I I saw that Mr. Pagaros came on for a second. Is to the, when I come back?
Sure. Sure, thank you, Mayor Combs. Just a reminder that we will be convening all of the, if council approves staff recommendation, we will need to convene these ad hoc subcommittees to identify their purpose, their goal, their objectives, and also timeframe in order to comply with our our rule, our procedures regarding ad hoc subcommittees. So we will be doing that. I just wanted to make that reminder.
All right, and so I think with that, we can proceed. There there was a first from councilmember Wilson and a second from me, correct?
Correct. I do have the first by city councilmember Wilson, a second by Mayor Combs to appoint city council representatives and alternatives to the various subcommittees, ad hoc subcommittees, direction to disband the inactive ad hoc subcommittees. And then, as Assistant City Manager Nick Pagaros had mentioned, direct a review of the ad hoc subcommittee's objectives and estimated time duration for their city council discussion or questions. Seeing none, I will call vote. City councilmember Mueller.
It's funny I go first now. Hi, yes.
City councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
City councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nash.
Yes.
And Mayor Combs.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
And with that, we move on to item D seven, provide direction to the city's voting delegate regarding regional vacancies for the city selection committee meeting December 18, 2020. And with that, I'm gonna sort of recognize councilmember Mueller.
I was just gonna say that the past couple of years, we've actually just given discretion to the mayor on these votes, and I I'd actually vote to continue that that privilege to the mayor to just go ahead and vote their conscience, because there are speeches given at these events and cases made. And I think it's a good practice to allow our mayor to use their discretion at the event, voting up to it on that vote. So I'd be supportive of just saying, go for it, Mayor Combs.
And so is that, I mean, we can certainly discuss, but is that a motion? Just just.
Yeah, that would be, that would be my motion.
Okay, so we do have a motion, but but certainly open to discussion from from anyone else in the council.
And Mayor Combs, may we open this to public comment before city council discussion?
I I need a mental note. Okay, yeah, so let's go to public.
We don't need notes, get me. I'm always going to interrupt for this. I do apologize. But at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item D seven, provide direction to the city's voting delegate regarding regional vacancies for the next city selection committee meeting on December 18, 2020, please engage that hand feature on the top right side of your screen. I'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you may address the city council at this time. Final call for public comment on item D seven regarding the city's voting delegate for the city selection committee meeting. Seeing none, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Okay, so we have a motion from councilmember Mueller, and I think that there was a second from councilmember Nash or Vice Mayor, or a desire to comment either way. Okay, so so I think I think we have a first and a second.
Perfect. Having a first by city councilmember Mueller and a second by Vice Mayor Nash to direct the voting delegate as Mayor Combs. Any further city council discussion or questions? Seeing none, city councilmember Mueller.
Yes.
City councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
City councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nash.
Yes.
Mayor Combs.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Well, with that, we'll go on to D eight, introduction and first reading of ordinance number 1074, amending ordinance number 924, modifying the city council's regular meeting schedule and adoption of 2021 city council meeting schedule. And with that, I will introduce the the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Combs and members of the council. So first of all, I want to congratulate the the two new district council members. And we now have, for the first time, a full body of district elected council members. And the the council members are already aware of this, but I did want to highlight for members of the public who are watching that district council members are, of course, elected by geographical regions. However, all council members' duties and allegiance goes to the city as a whole. So as council members are sworn in, they're and and they may be asked to make certain questions or make certain policy decisions that impact their own district. The decisions will be made based on the impact to the city as a whole. That's the principle of district elections. So one of the first acts that that you do take as as a new council, of course, is to set up your meeting schedule. And there are two different types of of meetings. There's regular meetings that are, that take place on a pre-published basis. And certain business can take place at those regular meetings, such as adoption of ordinances, which cannot be taken on at special meetings. And this setting up the the regular schedule is is done on an annual basis. This year, we are proposing, as with last year, that the regular meetings be on the second and fourth Tuesday of every month. And we have been changing the meeting time from seven o'clock to five o'clock during the pandemic. We found that this has worked well. So we suggest carrying that forward as well. And to do this, we we need an actual amendment to the ordinance that will codify the change of the meeting to instead of every Tuesday as the ordinance currently reads to just the second and fourth Tuesday of every month. And then the ordinance will also codify the change in the time from seven o'clock to five o'clock. Also, the, there are two regular meetings that conflict with holidays, and so we are recommending that that those two regular meetings be canceled and rescheduled. So that would be the April 13 meeting would be changed to April 20. And the September 28 meeting will be changed to September 21 to accommodate holidays. And finally, we are proposing, in connection with this year's meeting schedule, a goal setting meeting of January 19. So that concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any any clarifying questions for the the city attorney? Councilmember Wilson.
For the benefit of the council and the public, do you have a time for the January 19 goal setting meeting set up yet?
I do not know if that has been scheduled. I'll defer to the city clerk on that one.
Oh, Starla, I'm happy to refer to you. I do not believe a time has been scheduled. It is typically earlier in the day compared to a 5:00 PM start time. However, I do also realize that there is a holiday on January Monday 18. So the goal setting is tentatively scheduled for January 19.
And if if I may just add into that, I think there are still some unknowns. We are looking for a facilitator, and we don't have concurrent yet on on a facilitator. So we may need to move the actual date based on the availability of a facilitator. But ideally, we would do it earlier in the afternoon, because I think, you know, it can be an exhausting process, and starting later in the evening it really doesn't give us our best outcome. So if we can, and we would need to clear that through each of the council's schedules, because we we know that you all work very hard.
Okay. If there are, councilmember Wilson, any suggestions, feel free to you know, throw them out there. I think I think it's a
I have, I have comments, but I think, do you need to take public comment first?
Um, so, yes. So we will, and I want to just, we're done with sort of clarifying questions. If we're done with clarifying questions, it costs the sort of virtual dais, then then, yeah, I'll I'll turn it to the the city, to councilman Vice Mayor Nash.
Thank you. I guess I do have one clarifying question, and that is, is the desire to, from staff, that we actually comment when we know that we may have an absence?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that question, so someone from staff will have to come on.
We do not typically request that the council pre-identify if they're going to be absent. Understandably, your schedules are very busy and from time to time, not able to join a meeting or join remotely. These days, you can join from anywhere, so. But and and schedules change, as we've experienced this year. So I think, just as, if we can adopt the schedule and know what the plan is, then we can work with that. And then understandably, sometime, there may be a you may be absent from time to time.
Well, with that, I think we'll we'll go to public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item D eight, introduction and first reading of ordinance number 1074, amending ordinance number 924, modifying the city council's regular meeting schedule and adoption of the 2021 city council meeting schedule, please engage that hand feature on the top right side of your screen. I'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you may address the city council at this time. So final call for any public comment on item D eight regarding the city council schedule and calendar. Seeing none, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Cool, okay. With with that, then we'll we'll bring it back to the virtual dais, and and I'll I'll start with the councilmember Wilson, who I know had some comments.
Thanks, Mayor Combs. Yeah, so I have a few comments. The first is the date change for April 13 for Yom HaZikarun, which is a Jewish holiday. While I very much appreciate the Jewish holidays being recognized, it's actually, Yom HaZikarun is not a religious holiday. It's Israeli Memorial Day. So I don't, my feeling is I don't think that day needs to be rescheduled. It's it's an important day for Israelis and and for people, but it's not a religious observance. So I would propose having the meeting on the 13th instead of the 20th of April, as it would normally be per the pattern. My second comment is God willing, in August, we can like go somewhere. So I would, I plan to serve the city dutifully and to the best of my ability, but if we could take the holiday in August, the 10th, that is being proposed, I would love to not have a meeting at at a minimum on that day. And then my final comment is regarding having just been a member of the public a couple hours ago. I have the most recent experience of what it's like to attend a meeting and and want to engage. And a couple of things. One is the dinner breaks. If that could be published, if that's going to occur, if it could be, if the time could be put on the agenda, so the members of the public know when that's going to happen, that that would help. And then I know this one's a lot trickier, but it is challenging for members of the public who are waiting during closed session to know if it's going to be a 20-minute wait or an hour and a half wait. And, you know, I haven't gotten into closed session yet, but given all of your expertise, if there is anything that could be done to help the public with a sense of timing, I think that would be a huge courtesy. So those are my comments.
Yeah, totally fair. I'll just kick it off and say, councilmember Wilson, I go into every closed session hoping that it was just 20 minutes. Yeah, I think that 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 will take a little bit more thinking. All of the other suggestions, I I'm totally supportive of. I would just sort of throw my my hat in the ring, but then kick it to 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 everyone else to see, see whatever comments or suggestions. But then, uh, kick it to, to, to everyone else to see, see whatever comments or suggestions they, um, they have. But yeah, definitely in favor of, of, you know, making public the, the, the dinner break. Um, that, that totally, totally makes sense. So, so then, uh, Council, Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I was going to just move that we approve the calendar, um, with changing the twentieth back to the thirteenth and, um, as recommended by staff.
Yeah. And, and just, uh, just so we can, um, uh, give, give staff the opportunity to respond. Are you guys okay with that? And, and has there been some issue in the past with regards to recognizing the, the Israeli holiday? I just, we again, wanna, wanna make sure that there hasn't been a past issue. But again, totally, totally supportive of, of Councilmember Wilson's suggestions.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. Um, in regards to the holiday in April or the recognized, um, day in April, we have not run into any instances in the past where that has been an issue. So staff would be more than comfortable to still have the meeting on the thirteenth opposed to the twentieth. Um, I would like a little bit of clarification on the August and July meetings, uh, that staff proposed to cancel, which would have been July twenty seventh and August tenth. Um, so if city council would like to retain both of those, retain one of those, retain neither of those, um, we would need some clarification on that.
Uh, Councilmember Taylor?
I'm comfortable with skipping the meetings for the summer break. I'm comfortable keeping it.
Okay. Councilmember Mueller?
I'm fine with, I'm fine with it. Uh, I'm fine with both changes. And I just, my experience with this is calendar changes. By the time we get, by the time we get to March, we'll really know what the calendar is gonna look like later in the year. So I'm totally fine. I think those are good changes, good proposed changes.
Thank you. And, uh, just wanted to comment on, um, trying to agendize either closed session timing or dinner break. Staff will, uh, accept that direction, attempt to get those estimates either on our agenda or to the public in some sort of fashion. Okay.
Councilmember Wilson?
Um, I'm sorry, Councilmember Taylor, I, I don't know if I heard you correctly. Are you proposing that both the twenty seventh and the tenth are canceled for mental health or that you want to keep them?
No, I, well, the schedule that I looked at, uh, said it was for a summer break, tentatively.
Do you want?
Yes, definitely.
Thank you. So I do believe the motion was made by Vice Mayor Nash to approve the, uh, city council calendar and to introduce the first reading of ordinance number ten seventy four, including, uh, removing the April twentieth meeting, adding the April thirteenth meeting and removing the July twenty seventh and August seven, or August tenth meeting for summer break. Do we have a second? Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. Any further city council discussion or questions? Seeing none, by roll call vote, City Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
City Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
City Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nash?
Yes.
And Mayor Combs?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thanks. Um, with that, we'll go to, uh, city manager report.
Good evening. I have three quick reports. One, as you may be aware, there's a tradition of relaxed traffic enforcement in, not traffic parking enforcement in residential areas. This year, that will start on December eighteenth and run through January fourth. So, and it will be in an upcoming digest, uh, article that I wanted you to be aware of it. Second, uh, I know that you're all keenly interested in our new youth advisory group. They'll be having their first meeting on Thursday afternoon. And third, just so that you and the public know, the police chief recruitment is open and we're looking for great applicants. So encourage anyone you know who would be a great police chief to come join our team. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks for those, those updates. Um, I think, I don't know if, Councilmember Nash?
I'm sorry. Thank you. Um, could you, um, could someone repeat what was on Thursday? Which advisory group is this? I somehow.
The youth advisory group.
Perfect. Thank you.
And actually, my, my, uh, comment or, or suggestion was gonna be related to that. I, I don't know if, if the staff has, uh, agendaized or asked anyone on council maybe to go and, and welcome them, uh, since it will be the first one. And I don't want to, I, I know, uh, uh, this has been near and dear to Councilmember Mueller's heart, but I don't know his schedule. So, but, but.
So it is dear to my heart, but let me tell you, it matters a lot more than the mayor comes. The mayor should be the one to do it. The, the title with it means everything to him. It's, it's gotta be you.
Yeah. Okay. I, I, I see how that works, Councilmember Mueller. I, I make a suggestion. Right? Well, I'm, I'm totally, yeah, totally, totally fine with, uh, with, with doing that. But I, I, I think it, it would be, um, important and nice, uh, for, for someone on council, uh, to, uh, to, to, to welcome them to, 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 to city government. Okay. Um, with, um, with that, we'll go on to council member reports. And so, um, is there, are there, um, any council member reports? Um, okay. Well, I'll just, uh, just, oh, Councilmember Wilson?
Yeah, I just realized, um, when I had my little spiel at the beginning, um, I didn't acknowledge the staff and how it's been a pleasure getting to know them as a member of the public, um, the last four years. And I'm really looking forward to working with them and seeing kind of what's under the hood. And so, um, I just, I just wanted to make sure that they are such a big part of the city. And when I spoke about community, um, I just wanted to acknowledge that what an important part they all play. So, uh, thank you to the staff in advance.
No, totally, totally fair. And I, I understand those, those misses for, for my speech when I was sworn in. I, I forgot to thank my mother and she was actually in the audience. So I had to, had to go back and do, do, do a makeup there. Uh, totally cool. Well, well, with that, I, I just wanted to say that, um, to, uh, uh, council members Mueller and Wilson, very much congratulations on your, your, your election um, and, and being part of this, this, um, this full switch to, to district elections in, 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 in the city. To, uh, Vice Mayor Nash, I look forward to, to serving with you as, as the mayor and vice mayor, um, uh, over, um, over, over the next, uh, over the next year. Um, too bad we won't be meeting in person, so I can't sort of nudge you and be like, so where are we at? What did they just say? Um, and, uh, and to, uh, uh, Councilmember Taylor, uh, you leave very, very big shoes to, to fill. Um, and, and so, uh, and, and, and I, I think I'll, I'll just, I'll just, just leave it at that. And very, very big, big shoes to, to, to fill. And so with that, I think we will adjourn.
Happy holidays, everyone.